Who's that? Welcome.
All right, city staff, are we prepared to begin?
Yes, Mayor, we are ready.
Thank you. Good evening, and let's call the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting of June 7, 2022. Do order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Thank you. Item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals be allowed up to three minutes. This council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff or investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing and acting upon any item not agendaized pursuant to state law. At this time, there are any folks that wish to speak, items that are not on the agenda. If you could please raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the room.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. Then we will move on to item number five, conduct of business.
Item number five is receive presentation.
Mr. Mayor, can we scan item?
Oh, thank you. Mr. City Manager, I was trying to get us done before the polls close tonight, and I apologize for going forward. Thank you for pausing me. Appreciate it very much. Item number four, sorry, Lupita, consent calendar. Adopt resolution activating level two of the San Bruno water shortage contingency plan. Is there any member of council that has a question, comment, or, and this is an action item? Not seen any right now. Let's see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak regarding consent.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. With that, bring it back to council. Action by council.
Through the mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the items in the consent calendar.
I'll second. Motion seconded, Hamilton. Salazar, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye, thank you.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. Consent approved, five oh. Thank you, City Manager, sorry, Lupita. Now, we will go on to number five, conduct of business.
Item five eight, receive presentation on the 2022 San Bruno Revenue Measure feasibility survey.
Thank you very much. Now, I'll first turn it over to our city manager, Javon Grogan, and then we will also have some other presentations.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Medina, members of the city council, and members of the public. Javon Grogan, City Manager. As the mayor mentioned, item five A is to receive a presentation on the 2022 San Bruno Revenue Measure feasibility survey. The council will remember at your April 12 meeting, you established a subcommittee of the city council, Vice Mayor Mason and Councilmember Marty Medina. That subcommittee was to work with staff and our polling consultant on the development of a feasibility survey of likely voters for the November 22 election and asked questions about several ballot measures that the city council has been considering, potentially putting on the November 22 ballot. That subcommittee met with myself, city staff, as well as Brian Godby from Godby Research. The poll was executed. The results were obtained during the month of May. We are here to discuss the results of that poll, as well as receive advice from Brian Godby, as well as another consultant that the city retained, Jared Boygan from Props and Measures, a consulting firm that supports cities to place measures on the ballot. So both Jared and Brian are here, and I'll now turn the presentation over to Brian Godby for a summary of the poll and the results.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Grogan. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm pleased to present the results of the survey. My name is Brian Godby, and I'm president of Godby Research, longtime pollster for the city. I assume everybody can see the PowerPoint presentation? Okay, great. So in brief summary of the purpose of the survey itself, we looked at a variety of things. We looked at some background, climate kinds of things like city services, where the economy is going, that sort of stuff. We looked at a very specific infrastructure bond measure that we put a hypothetical wording together. We looked at a variety of different things we might send the money on in that kind of infrastructure bond. There are informational statements on both sides of the coin. We looked at rate issues, and then, of course, we also looked at additional measures that the council is considering and to see how that might impact the infrastructure measure. And then there's a wealth of demographic and behavioral information that we use to make sure that the sample is representative of the universe that we're interested in. In terms of the more specific methodology, this was an online and phone survey of likely November 2022 voters. So that means that online, we targeted people who are in that likely voter universe. It's not just posting a link on Facebook and taking whoever we get. We were in the field from the 11th through the 18th. The average phone survey was 25 minutes long, which is still our metric for judging length. The sample size was 446, so we overperformed our goal of 400, which helps bring the error to 4.55% plus or minus. Jumping into the key findings, again, the first section of the survey was kind of what's going on in San Bruno, the background climate, if you will. The first question was, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the city's provision of services? And as you can see from adding the very and somewhats together here, we're at 59% satisfied. That's a little bit lower than the survey we did in 2020, preceding the council placing the TOT on the ballot, where we were at 64. But statistically speaking, there isn't really a difference. The next question was management of public funds. This one almost always goes down from services because there's a larger chunk of people who don't know because they honestly don't follow your budget that carefully, and that's fine. But here, when we add very and somewhats together, we see that we've got 45% favorable in the 22 survey, and that's a little bit higher than in the November 20 survey universe that we looked at a couple of years ago. In terms of the direction of the economy, given the state of things currently, we're at 14% said that it's better in the next six months. 38% said about the same, 44% said worse. And again, you can compare that to the 2020 survey, where the better was 27, the about the same was 18. So you see there's some moving around there, and the worst was about the same place as we are today. So it's really some change between better and about the same, given the cost of gas, inflation, and those sorts of things. The next question in this section and final one was just their rating of the city's handling of the COVID crisis. Again, adding the very and somewhats together, you see we're at 69% favorable and 13% unfavorable. There's 19% that didn't have an opinion. We've asked this question over the last two years, and we've seen it as high as 83%, seen it as low as 35%. The average is about 59, so you're a little bit above the average, so people are pretty happy with the city's efforts. So at that point, we switched gears, and we went into the specific infrastructure bond measure, and you see the hypothetical wording on the right-hand side of the slide. It meets all the statewide legal requirements. It's less than 75 words. It has the bond authorization, which is $124 million. It has a tax rate, which is three cents per hundred of assessed value. It says that will be taxed while the bonds are outstanding, which is the term. And then it says it generates $6.6 million annually. All of those are things that are required by state law. The other things are more up to us. You can decide to use those infrastructure dollars however we might. You can see the bullets that we determined in our work with staff and the subcommittee. The way we judge feasibility is we add the definitely and probably yes together, and you see that's at 58%. And that's an okay place to start, as long as there's substantial growth. Tipping my hand, there isn't, so that's a bit frustrating, but it is what it is, and we'll see more about that as I go through here. The next set of questions ask people to consider what the tax rate would be for, or the tax amount would be for the average homeowner. So we did the math for them. Well, we're required to have a rate by state law, and that was three cents per hundred, $100 of assessed valuation. We can do the math because we know what the average home is worth or assessed at. And so that three cents per hundred translates into $128 for the average homeowner. And you see, when we told people that, the support goes down to 49%. When we cut it back to $85 for the average homeowner, we're at 61%, so it's up a little bit from where we started up. And when we go down as far as $42, we're at 70%. So there is certainly tax rate sensitivity, although it's important to note that this wording, which is simpler and easier to understand, cannot be in the ballot question. It's not how the law requires you to talk about this measure. So this is subsequent information that people would have to get. The next set of questions, there's several slides here. It was a long list of various things that we might spend the money on, and we basically said, would you be more or less likely to support the measure, knowing that we'd spend it in that particular area? We then drilled down, is that much more or somewhat more likely? Same thing on the negative side. What you see here is we've grouped the various infrastructure projects into like groups, groupings, and then we've added the very and somewhat, or the much more likely and somewhat more likely together, and that's what this box shows. So this is the fire station-related items, and you see that upgrade fire stations to accommodate modern firefighting and life-saving emergency medical equipment is 70% in round numbers, at least somewhat more likely to support the measure. Upgrade fire stations to ensure operations during earthquakes and natural disasters is 68% in round numbers. And upgrade fire stations to ensure rapid emergency response time is 68% in round numbers as well. And those are all above the two-thirds threshold necessary to pass this kind of infrastructure bond. But when we apply that four-and-a-half percent margin of error, we could be below that two-thirds threshold. The next set of items that were grouped together were sort of public works and included streets and storm drains. And you can see here, at the top of the list, we have fix puddles and maintain local streets and roads. That's at 78%, so that's a substantial number. It's well above the two-thirds threshold. And even when we apply that four-and-a-half or five percent, depending on how you round margin of error, we're still in the 70s, not at that two-thirds threshold. So that's something that's a top priority for respondents. The next grouping is much tighter ranked together, and that's the stormwater items. At the top of the list, in terms of our separate ranking, we have repair deteriorating storm drains to prevent flooding, repairing deteriorated storm drains to prevent sinkholes, reduce pollutants flowing into the bay, and repair and maintain storm drains to prevent water pollution. You can see these range from 70 down to 65% or 62%, sorry, at a low. So, you know, some of those are right at the threshold of two-thirds, some of them are not. The next grouping was parks, and really, this was a split sample, so half of the respondents got one version, half of them got the other version. And you see, there's a little bit of a difference. It's not statistically significant. When we add ball fields into the item O, it's at 60%. When we take it out, it's at 62%. I wouldn't say there's a statistically significant difference there. There's a little more intensity with the ball field, but a little less overall support. And the final grouping was libraries, and you see here the same sort of methodology. Again, we've added the much more likely and somewhat more likely together. The bad news is none of these get to 60%. We're just below that for all of these items. Increase library space for children's literary programs, 58. Improve public library to provide better access to computers, et cetera, 59. Bring San Bruno library facilities up to modern earthquake standards, 56. Bring San Bruno library facilities up to modern earthquake standards, 56. And on down the list, but the bad news is we're not approaching the two-thirds threshold. Now, the next set of questions, the methodology is similar, but it's shown a little bit different. Here, we asked people a list of informational statements and said, does this make you much more likely, somewhat more likely, or does it have no effect on your vote? We then created a numeric ranking, which is a real accurate way of comparing them, but somewhat obscure. So we also provide percentage range when we add the much more and somewhat more likely together. And you can see in this top grouping here, we're at 69 to 68%. So it's above the two-thirds threshold. But again, with a margin of error of four and a half or five percent, we could easily be below the two-thirds threshold for all of these. At the top of this list, none of the money would be used for administrator salaries, a perennially high accountability component for victims of heart attacks, strokes, and accidents, seconds can be different, et cetera. That's kind of the 911 response component of the fire stations. Measure will give San Bruno local control over local funds, and the money cannot be taken by the state, is what's behind the ellipses there. Those are the top three items. Number four is San Bruno has the oldest fire stations in the county. And number five is the measure requires independent citizens oversight, another perennially important accountability component. And then we go down from there. But, you know, again, these are all still really important to people. They're just not really a lot above the two-thirds threshold. And the remainder of the items, again, are still all positive, but you see we range from 66 down to 51. So, you know, while some of these are more important, some of them are much less important to the respondents. So at this point in the survey, after giving them all that information, the details, if you will, about the potential infrastructure bond, we come back to the exact same wording a second time. And this is where we would expect to see it go up and obviously go up to above two-thirds if we were to think this is feasible. And you see, we go from 58% in round numbers to 59. So this is as good as it gets. And so this sort of suggests that at this point, we should be thinking about a 2024 election for this, where there's a different environment, both in terms of likely voters as well as perhaps the economy as well. But that's not the end of the discussion. We also tested a variety of negatives because we do want to make sure that we're being fair. And so here, the methodology is largely the same as the informational statements. The higher it is, the worse it is for the measure. And at the top of this list, not surprising, given our economic climate right now, we have rising gas prices, growing inflation, and the ongoing COVID crisis. Now's the wrong time. And that's 57%, at least somewhat more likely to oppose the measure. Potential other property taxes that might be on the ballot at the same time. We can't afford all these new taxes is next. The city getting so much money from new development and big companies, we don't need to tax residents, and on down the list. So then we come back to our ballot question yet a third time. And now we've seen how high we can go, which was 59. And we can see how low we go after people hear both the positives and then the negatives in that order. And you see, we're back down to 52%. So lower than the 58 that we started at. To be fair, you could average a second and third test, that would be about 56%. But still, we're 10 points below the two-thirds threshold, and that doesn't even account for the margin of error in the survey. The next question that we asked switched gears a little bit, and this talked about a commercial real estate property transfer tax. That would be 1% for four-unit and up. And you can see the wording again on the right-hand side of the slide. This is a little different because this measure only requires a simple majority. So 55.4% exceeds that four and a half percent margin of error, not by a lot, but by a little bit. So this, in terms of judging feasibility, looks like it could be possible. We could do some extra work on this ballot question to talk about what it would do, what people would get out of it. And that would certainly be an appropriate activity, much like we did with the sales tax remand on the ballot. Next question asked people if they supported the idea of ending the elected mayor position and making it a rotated portion of the council. And as you can see here, when adding the definitely and probably together, we're at Next question asked if there should be an amendment to the municipal code to create a term limit for council members and the mayor. And here you see we're at 66% in round numbers, so above the simple majority necessary to be successful. And then finally, we asked those questions because we wanted to see, again, if they had any impact on the infrastructure bond. And we go up a little bit from the third test. We're a little bit lower than the average of the second and third, and we're clearly lower than the initial test where we were at 58. So we're at 54 at the end here. So that doesn't change our conclusions, which are that the bond measure tested really doesn't appear to be viable for this year. It's not anywhere near the two-thirds threshold, and it might be something to think about for a future election. Residents are clearly price sensitive, as I noted earlier on, and that's important new information for a future effort, if there is to be one. Strong majorities of voters do prioritize a variety of capital improvements, so there are things that are important to them for sure. San Bruno residents, among them, prioritize funding for streets and roads and fire and storm drains. Parks and libraries are in that order at the end of the list. And then finally, the commercial transfer tax charter amendment that would enable it is viable for '22. As I mentioned earlier, slight adjustments might be recommended to the ballot language as we bring that back to the council. And the city could consider adding language to the ballot measure, which would illustrate the things that it might be spent on, such as the general purpose tax can be used for funds or to fund items such as public safety parks and infrastructure, which obviously were popular. So that is the presentation I have for this evening. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hey, thank you for the presentation. If we could stop sharing the screen? Thank you. At this time, why don't we see if there is any questions from colleagues on the presentation? And then, of course, then we'll go to the public and then back to council. Councilmember Salazar.
One quick question. So we open up the possibility of maybe looking at 2024 to do the bond measure. What can you tell us, based on your experience and research, that is different in a presidential year that could either make this worse or somewhat better if we wait?
I think what could make it somewhat better is the turnout will go up dramatically. I mean, we're expecting in San Mateo County as a whole for November, a 46%, 47% turnout. In November of '24, that'll be 80%. And what the fundamental difference isn't so much a partisanship, but is an age difference. And so it will be a much younger group of voters in November of 2024. When we have a presidential election, then it will be this year. And this year, as I think all of you probably know from watching the primary, the turnout has been really low. Now, we haven't counted everything yet, and that starts tonight, but it looks like it's going to be record low.
And just a quick follow-up. When we spoke previously in the preview to this meeting, I asked specifically about what information we'd collected in this survey about the demographics. And I'm wondering if those results agree with what you're saying, that a larger, young turnout would make a difference in the results?
Yeah, I think it would. I mean, just to give you an idea of what the turnout age looks like in this sample, which is again reflective of what we think is going to happen in November of this year, 37% or 65-plus. And you all know from, you know, being San Bruno residents, that that's not the population. That's the likely voters in a low-turnout election. 29% are 50 to 64. So the vast majority are over 50 years old. If we look at the other end of the spectrum, the 18 to 29 are just 6% of the turnout in November. The 30 to 39s are 14%. And the 40 to 49 rounding it out are 14% as well. So that's the group that changes dramatically. And some of these things are more important to younger voters.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, but did the survey confirm that the younger responders were more favorable than the others?
In general, yes. But part of the issue is we don't actually have those younger voters in the sample that will be voting in '24. We have the regular younger voters, which are not quite the same people. So when I say it's going to be different in '24, that's based on having done lots of these kinds of surveys and measures in presidential election years, where we see those younger voters come out and be supportive of these kinds of measures. So some of that is, you know, reading between the lines a little bit.
Okay, okay. I know it's imperfect. This is actually better than what we would normally get from election results, because in the election results, we don't know how people voted.
Right.
In this case, attach those demographics. So thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. The vice mayor and I did work on this, defining the poll questions, and you guys did a really good job. So I wanted to thank you on that. A general question on the breakdown of the data collection for the break for slides, is that the typical breakdown in the manner that people are taking surveys now? Or is that kind of reflective of maybe the older likely voters?
Yeah, that's a good question. It has become typical. You know, there are still a few people that answer their phones.
Right.
Handlines or cellphones, but it's very few. And while as little as four years ago, cellphone responses were our mainstay, they've really dropped down dramatically because, you know, what we all do is we look at the number and we don't recognize it and we don't answer it. But when we get a text on the same device, we read it.
Right.
Enough to delete it. And so for the last four years, since the 2018 gubernatorial election, texting had been our predominant way of getting, text invitations to an online survey has become the predominant way we get survey responses. The interesting thing is, we first thought, when we started texting, which is actually even before that, that, oh, we won't include the 65-plus. And that's absolutely not the case. We get an equal distribution of age for our voter universe regardless of which type of interviewing we're doing. So even if we just did texting, we could still have a representative sample based on age. And my realization is that seniors, of which I'm almost in that category, need to text in order to speak with their grandkids.
Right.
Because that's the only way they can communicate with them.
Great. I did like that we also received a favorable response in our COVID response. And my last question really is, the breakdown of fire station, I'm sorry, streets, fire station, storm, parks, and library, is that kind of, of other surveys that you conducted, is that kind of the norm? Or just wanted to hear your thoughts on, I'm a little surprised the library didn't perform as well, but maybe you could help explain any analysis of the data.
Yeah, so the streets, fire station, and storm drain ordering is exactly what we see elsewhere, as is the library. What's been going on with libraries since probably the late 90s is support for buildings has continued to go down, which is not to say there's no support, because obviously we're in the high 50s. But in that same time period, we've seen support for library services to maintain, maintaining very high numbers, in fact, in the mid 70s very often. Now, in this survey, this was an infrastructure bond, so we were talking about buildings. So that's dropped off, and it's dropped off elsewhere. I've got two surveys I did in another nearby county in the Bay Area that were putting a parcel tax measure for library services on the ballot this November. But we tested in basically the same community, a bond measure, and we're not. So it's exactly the same pattern. Now, to the extent that, obviously, you can't do library services without having a place to do them. And therein lies the catch, is you've got to communicate and as best you can within the constraints of putting a ballot question together, that it's about the services that will be provided in that facility, not about the bricks and mortar.
Thank you.
Seeing no hands at this time, let's see if there's any members of the public that wish to comment.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. Bringing it back to council, again, this is just a presentation to be received, which we have, and we appreciate it. Seeing no other hands or comments at this time, is there anything else, city manager, that we, I'm sorry, I couldn't tell if I'm seeing something or, is there somebody that wishes, I'm not seeing a hand, but I'm seeing, I've got Marty doing this to me, and I've got.
Our vice mayor had her hand up.
Okay, well, there we go. Okay, that was just confusing me, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Mason.
I was just going to say that Councilmember Medina and I met with our consulting group and spoke for quite a bit, so I think a lot of our questions have been answered. So I'll probably ask more questions in the following items, but I just want to make it clear that we did have a separate session and had an opportunity to dive into a lot of these numbers. So thank you.
Okay. Yes, there was an ad hoc committee or subcommittee that was appointed by the council, and I know each of us have had an opportunity to be briefed and ask more detailed questions as well. So each of us have had that opportunity as well. Okay, hearing and seeing nothing else at this time? Thank you again both for your presentation. And why don't we go ahead and move on to item six, public hearing.
Item six A, conduct first public hearing regarding proposed city charter and commercial real property transfer tax.
Okay, thank you very much. And I will like at this time to turn it over to our city manager, Javon Grogan.
I'm up once again. So good evening again, mayor members of the city council, the public. I'm here to provide a presentation with regard to the potential ballot measure for a city charter and a commercial property transfer tax. And so we've just received a presentation on the survey results, and we have three other items tonight. This one, which is a public hearing on the contents of the city charter. Should the city council decide to place a charter on the ballot, state law requires that you have two public hearings. And so we're under a bit of a tight timeline, and we want to, and we support the city council through its deliberations, ensure that we are having the prerequisite meetings to allow you to make that decision to place it on the ballot should you decide to do so. And so our presentation tonight has a few items. We'll go through a little background, how we got here, and exactly what we're talking about. We'll do a recap on establishing a city charter. We'll provide a definition of commercial property. We will talk about tax exemption options. We will talk about potential commercial property transfer tax rates. We will then discuss a few key points of establishing a city charter, timeline, and then have city council discussion, action, and of course, public comment. So a little bit of a backup. So if we go back to October 26 of '21, seems like a long time ago, but it wasn't. We held a study session with the city council, where the city council provided direction to staff to investigate research and provide you as a body with policy analysis and options related to a number of potential ballot items for this upcoming November. And one of those was establishing a city charter and a commercial property transfer tax as a combined measure. And so let's talk a little bit about what a charter is. So there are So there are, in California, there are two types of cities, there are general law cities and there are charter cities. And the city council held a study session on March 29th, where we talked about this in detail, and so I'll just give the high level version. But if you're a general law city, your powers are really derived by the state constitution. However, if you're a charter city, you have more control over your municipal affairs, and you can chart your own destiny to some extent. And we'll talk a little bit about the differences in where that line is drawn. But you have more power over zoning, local elections, and other matters. In order to be a charter city, a charter has to be drafted. And as I mentioned before, state law requires two public hearings and a vote of the people at a statewide general election. Important to note, a majority of voters are required to adopt a charter. At that meeting on March 29th, we really talked about the difference between establishing a charter commission or having the city council develop the charter. And there was direction provided by the city council to streamline the process and really do what we're sort of casually calling a simple charter, or what cities develop, that has a commercial property transfer tax integrated within the charter. Important to note that in order for a city charter with a tax measure to be placed on the ballot as an integrated measure, you need a two-thirds affirmative vote of the city council to place the measure on the ballot. So here in San Bruno, having five members of the city council, we need four of five city council members to authorize placing the integrated measure on the ballot. Only a majority of voters are required to adopt it, but it does take what is called a supermajority to place on the ballot. A few features of a commercial property transfer tax. It is paid upon sale of property. The payment can be negotiated between the buyer and seller as a form of that transaction. Key issues for discussion, and we'll go through a little bit of how you define commercial. We had a long discussion about this on our March 29th meeting. There's also options for property exemptions. One is to exempt residential property, or exempt property based on certain thresholds, and one option is a certain ballot amount. And so now let's talk about types of commercial property, because when you talk commercial property, there are some common categories that come to mind. The first category that's shown there is an office building, a hotel, or a retail structure, common commercial property. Often, common commercial property is industrial property, warehouse, manufacturing. What's oftentimes not immediately thought of is commercial residential or multifamily housing, rental, distinguished from condominium complexes, as commercial property. Plan unit development, so if you have a planned unit development by a residential or a commercial developer, it's actually commercial property, and vacant land, if sold appropriately for commercial. And so in order to analyze this for the city council, as we talked about before, we did a tax simulation analysis, and we needed to define commercial property. And so we use the definition, or the property types that are above, but the key distinguishing factor is in our analysis, we define commercial property with respect to a multifamily rental project as five units or greater, and that's a key distinction. And what that really means is that all single-family homes, a duplex or triplex or fourplex would be exempt. In addition, there are some other exemptions, and staff is recommending that we go with a standard, industry standard list of exemptions and not pick a threshold and have a very straightforward tax structure that that can be explained. And a few of the industry standard exemptions are, you would not pay the commercial property transfer tax if it was a gift deed, unfortunate, or depending on the situation, maybe fortunate dissolution of a marriage. Certain trust transfers, certain court order conveyances, conveyance of strictly a name change would not be subject to the tax. Changes in the method of how you hold a title, maybe holding it as an individual, but yet you set up an LLC or a living trust, that would not trigger a payment of the commercial property transfer tax. Assignment of leases, deed to a public entity, or conveyance made in lieu of or owed. So these are industry standard exemptions for a commercial property transfer tax. And so our recommendation is that would apply here in San Bruno as well. And so the analysis of a potential commercial property transfer tax, and I mentioned we conducted the simulation, so we analyzed 21 cities in the Bay Area that had a commercial property transfer tax, and we estimated the revenue in San Bruno. And so how did we estimate that revenue? We estimated that revenue on a look back. A commercial property transfer tax is subject to ebbs and flows of the market and how many properties actually transact each year. So the best way to make an estimated projection is to look back. So we looked back five years and acquired from the county detailed transactional data on every commercial property that transacted in San Bruno. And so depending on the structure, and we'll talk a little bit about that, the analysis showed that had the city had a commercial property transfer tax in place, the annual revenue would have been, on the low year, on the lowest tax rates, $61,000. On those cities with the highest tax rate, the highest amount, that we would have received is $2.7 million. Important to note, in San Bruno, in the last five years, we have had some fairly large properties transact. And so that's why you see that very large range, but it's also very dependent upon the tax rate. And so the tax rates in those 21 cities that we surveyed really varied. Some cities had very simple structures, 0.08%, 1%, and other cities had very tiered structures, a set amount, but if a property transacted, let's say for over $3 million or $5 million, the tax rate increased. And some cities, as I said, have a simple range, and that simple range was 0.055%, which is the basic documentary transfer tax rate, to 1.3%. And so staff recommends, should the city proceed, staff recommends with a 1% tax rate, the structure being it would apply to commercial residential properties as defined earlier, but five plexes and above. This means that every single-family home in the city, as well as every duplex, triplex, and fourplex would be accepted from the commercial property transfer tax. In addition, all other commercial property types would be subject to the tax, again, upon a sale transaction. The estimated annual revenue, again, it will ebb and flow based on the economy, but looking back and applying the 1% model, annually, the revenue to the city, we estimate at approximately $1 million. And that's shown stratified at the bottom of slide nine, with the revenue from commercial residential property on average being just under $300,000, and then revenue from all the other commercial property types being just under $800,000 or $785,000. Again, it is subject to actual transactions that happen, and so the amount will vary. Lastly, let's just return to a few discussion points of establishing a city charter. And so there are a few general provisions that are worth noting. And so first general provision is that generally, cities will follow state law, or generally, these cities will follow state law in all areas except those areas that are stated in the charter. And as I mentioned before, and as we talked extensively on March 29th, is that becoming a charter city really provides broad power to a city to regulate its own municipal affairs. The city council's direction was to establish a very limited charter, and so the draft charter that we have prepared really aligns and continues to align with state law, except in a few key stated areas. It authorizes, most notably, the city to implement a commercial real property transfer tax if approved by a majority of voters. It also includes a provision that the city will continue to require payment of prevailing wage per state law applicable to general law cities. So currently, because we're a general law city, have to pay prevailing wage, and our contractors have to pay prevailing wage, as a charter city, you can exempt yourself from that. We certainly did not want to do that, and so we've included that provision in the charter. And within the body of the charter, it is important to define commercial. And so as stated before, we are defined commercial as, like your typical office, hotel, retail, industrial property, commercial residential, again, five units or greater, planned unit development, and vacant land. And so just to touch, lastly, or really close to the last slide, on the process, the timeline, it requires two public hearings. There are state mandates on the amount of days between each public hearing, so there must be 30 days between the first and second public hearing, and more than a 21-day notice. So we are all set to comply with that notice, and a public hearing notice was posted in the local paper for this hearing as well. It is also important to note that the city council will need to schedule a special meeting on August 3rd in order to finalize and provide final direction on all of your ballot measures. And the city's deadline, eight days from E-Day, or the election date, we and all other cities are required to submit our ballot measures to the county by August 12th. And so we're on an important timeline. A lot of work has been said about, sent your direction in October, and we've had a lot of meetings on it. But we are here tonight for a discussion and action with regard to the draft charter language. And so we would like to conclude the staff presentation and turn it, mayor, we will turn it back over you for additional discussion, as well as public comment. Thank you, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, city manager. I just want to clarify, you said, says provide direction, but you said direction and action.
Should the city council desire to change any language in the draft charter, we will require a formal action, but it could simply be discussion, and we can conclude the public hearing if there are no changes without an action item.
Okay, so direction, unless what you have presented, there's any question for modification? Am I just so unclear?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right, with that said, is there any questions on the presentation from colleagues at this time? I mean, we certainly will come back to that, don't worry. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I just want to get, I just want to clarify on the prevailing wage part of it. So the reason that that's in there is because we're, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So the reason that's in there is because the state law that requires payment of prevailing wage only applies to general law cities. And since we're establishing our charter with really this only, with this one area in mind of the commercial real property transfer tax, we're adding that in there to make us be the same as we are now in as other general law cities when it comes to prevailing wage. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Hamilton.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that properly. And then I'm going to, I apologize for doing the politician thing and asking a question I know the answer to, but is this a slippery slope? Is this one of those things where, is it where by establishing a charter, now that gives the city, the city council or future city councils a tool to be able to add other stuff to the charter without the consent of the voters?
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. As written, power stays with the voters, and so we, the core provisions of the charter are aligning to the state law requirements for general law cities, except where explicitly stated, the primary component is the commercial property transfer tax. If I read in between the lines of your question a little bit, because as we've been talking about a commercial property transfer tax, I know there have been statements, well, once you do a commercial property transfer tax, the city is just going to implement it for residential, as well as single-family homeowners will be paying the commercial property transfer tax. The power will stay with the voters. And so as structured, should the four or five council members move this word to the ballot, and should the majority of voters say yes to implement the charter and the commercial property transfer tax, it will require voter approval and another regular election to apply that tax or any other tax to single-family homes, or to make a change. So the power is still, or rests with the people.
Great, thank you. And I appreciate you answering the question when I knew the answer, but, you know, I've spent a lot of time over the past months and years talking about this topic with residents, and that was a very, that was a very popular question, so I wanted to make sure that it was asked. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to ask, so this is the first public hearing. It would be great if we can get additional information on the exemptions of the next public hearing. I don't see a lot in the packet around the exemptions, exactly what they mean. And so we don't necessarily have to go into that right now, but aside from having like, what are the popular exemptions? I'm not sure if we're saying okay by not saying anything on them tonight, so I just want to be clear that I'd like to know more about those exemptions. How do they apply to an individual versus a corporation in particular?
Sure, so with regard to those exemptions, we can provide additional information.
Great. And then my second question is, I'm glad you kept the prevailing wage in there. I'd also request that you keep the public bidding contract in there as well, based on... Let me just be very clear. Under the general law city, there's competitive bidding requirements, and under the charter city, it's not required to comply with bidding statutes provided the city charter or city ordinance exempts the city from such statutes. So the question might be that, are we taking that action by not taking, you know, any action on public contracts, or do we maintain what we have now as far as our public contract requirements? Does that make sense? So since we're not clearly or explicitly saying anything about public contract, does that automatically stay the way that it is, absent us making a change in the charter?
Sure. And I think the city attorney, the interim city attorney has needed yourselves on how... Ms. Ortiz, please take it away.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Mason, so the charter, the way it works is it provides all powers to the city unless it provides a limitation, unless there's a limitation specifically named in the charter. So otherwise, if it's not named in the charter, you would be following the general law. And if the city wanted to change the bidding requirements, it would have to adopt an ordinance to do so. It would have the power to do it under the charter, because it would have all the powers reserved to itself as a charter city, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you. So just to be clear, the, under the, it's page 65 of the packet, everything under general law city then stays in place?
It would stay in place unless and until a charter city adopted an ordinance to do so. It would stay in place unless and until a charter city adopted an ordinance to change it, provided the power wasn't limited in the charter.
Which we're not doing right now, correct? Okay, thank you. Okay, that's, those are my questions, thank you. Thank you, City Attorney Ortiz.
Seeing no other hands raised at this moment, why don't we go ahead and open up to the public? This is a public hearing. So at this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on the item, if you could please raise your virtual hand or log in if you're on the phone, and you will be brought in to the discussion.
No hands are raised.
Thank you. Again, last call, that this is a public hearing. And once we close the public hearing, we will not be going back to the public tonight. Yes, it is coming back again, there are more opportunities, but just for this evening. Last time to ask for any public, any public comments, I'm sorry. Seeing still none, I'll bring it back to council. Ask if there is a motion, please to close the public hearing.
Through the mayor, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
A motion seconded, Hamilton, Marty Medina, roll call, ladies.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
No.
Vice Mayor Mason? Vice Mayor Mason?
Yeah, closing the public hearing?
That's a motion on floor.
Okay, yeah, if there's nobody to make a comment, yes.
I don't know if I was asked for...
Oh, I did. Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye, so I have a four-one, close public hearing. Public hearing is closed, and now we will bring it back to council. Councilwoman Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this question will be for our new city attorney. Welcome. In the presentation, there was a mention of vacant land is treated as commercial. Now, if there was a property that was entitled to be residential property and it just hasn't gone through with the permits, how does that property be handled? Does it have to be actually built, permitted, or is entitled good enough for it to be residential?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Medina, I will let the city manager address the question about how the tax is structured, but I will start by saying that what the charter does is simply provide state that the charter city intends to exercise the power of levying a real estate transfer tax. There will then be an ordinance that would implement the tax. And all of that, all of those specifics, the, what, how it applies, what the rate is, and which properties are exempt, would be spelled out in that ordinance. I don't believe that ordinance has yet been adopted. So those are the things that we would look, I mean, it's been drafted, and those are the type of things that we would look at to put in the ordinance.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Salazar, oh, I apologize, I'm, I'm sorry, the, Tricia Ortiz is dead to the city manager after, my apologies. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to expound upon Ms. Ortiz's answer. So, Councilmember Medina, in regards to your question of would vacant land that was zoned residential have to pay the commercial property transfer tax? That would be subject to, that would apply to commercial properties five years ago. So as the city attorney said, it would really matter on how we drafted the ordinance, but for example, if you had a single parcel that was zoned as R1, and let's call it an acre of land, and there could be up to eight units per acre in our R1 zone, it is possible that that vacant land, because more than one, more than four units could be built on that parcel would be subject to the commercial property transfer tax, the law itself. But the mechanics and the details would have to be worked out in that ordinance. But the short answer is yes, but it depends.
Councilmember Salazar? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first I wanted to just elaborate on my no vote on closing the public hearing. And my concern in closing the public hearing is that this is probably one of the most important things that we'll discuss this year, next to the districting, which we completed. This is a hugely important issue to the city and how the city is governed. And judging from the number of attendees in public, I think I count one member of the public that I recognize among the twelve attendees. I believe everyone else is staffed. And I think that's reflective of the poor effort that we made as a city in letting the public know that this would be discussed, that this was one of only two opportunities for them to comment, and that we're conducting this at a non-regular meeting. This is a special meeting, not one that people would normally be in, would normally have on their calendars. And so that, that's why I was not in favor of closing the hearing. I don't think we did the process justice. I know we all agreed that we wouldn't go the route of a commission to create a charter, and we all agreed that we wanted to do this quickly. But I don't believe that doing this in this manner, and with the response that we're getting, it does any justice, nor does it create a sense of trust in the community or the openness or transparency that are really a hallmark of having a charter city, where more powers are entrusted to the local government, and many of the checks and balances that the state rules provide are largely eliminated. I heard two conflicting things from staff. So I heard the city manager say that the power of any changes remains with the voters. I also heard our city attorney tell us that an ordinance could modify something that's in the charter once that power is given to the council. So I believe those statements are in conflict. And I believe what the city attorney said is actually true, and that we would have the ability to change things unless they were specifically prohibited in the charter. So based on that, I think I'm less confident than Councilmember Hamilton on this not being a slippery slope, because while we may be well intentioned today, some future council may have some other ideas. The charter is silent, in fact, on commercial versus residential. So that's something that could be decided by ordinance and could be changed by a majority vote of the city council in the future.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify, please?
Yes, Tricia Ortiz, please, go ahead.
So the charter cannot be amended except for by a vote of the people. And yes, you would adopt rules under your charter by ordinance. However, a tax measure, even though it's adopted by an ordinance, still under the state constitution requires voter approval. So you could not change the classifications of your real property, real estate transfer tax to expand the category without going back to the voters and getting approval of that measure.
And when the charter specifically is purposely general enough where there are no limitations, then that wouldn't require an amendment to the charter. It would merely require a change of how we interpret that to apply. Because right now, it doesn't say anything about the number of units. It doesn't say anything about commercial versus residential. It's completely silent on that.
Right, as part of the measure. So voters will approve a charter. They will always, also be approving a tax ordinance, and you will be limited to only those things that are in the tax ordinance. So you could not change interpretations in a way that broadened a tax category or had the effect of increasing the tax on anybody without going back to the voters for approval.
And again, I think we heard that limitation on the number of words and description in the, in the ballot measure itself would preclude us from including a lot of details on how that would be limited.
Correct, and so what typically happens is you have a ballot measure that generally describes that you're approving a tax, but in the ballot materials is the actual text of the ordinance that the voters are approving.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then just finally, you know, under Article Six of what was proposed, it says, "The language of this charter is intended to be permissive rather than exclusive or limiting, and shall be liberally and broadly construed in favor of the exercise by the city of its power to govern." So to me, that, that statement is concerning again, because it, I believe it does leave the door open for some interpretation of, you know, what powers will be, will be taken on in the future. And again, without a lot of public input, I, I'm not comfortable in moving forward with what's being proposed.
Other questions from colleagues? Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Mason?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to ask the city manager a couple of, just comparison questions, because I wasn't on the council when Measure G was approved. And I'm just wondering, what was the requirement for Measure G to be approved as far as the population?
Measure G, to the mayor, Vice Mayor Mason? Measure G was a general tax requiring fifty percent plus one.
Okay, and then just as a reminder, what is the requirement for this one?
Fifty percent plus one. If the, as structured, the commercial property transfer tax would be a general tax.
Okay, and were the limitation on words any different than they are now?
As the interim city attorney articulated, I believe for all ballot measures, or certainly for Measure G and for the commercial property transfer tax that we're, that we're talking about, there will be a seventy-five-word limit. However, the details are in an ordinance that are also included in the voter pamphlet. And so you can't fit all the details of a, of a tax in the ballot question, which is why state law requires the ordinance. Yes, you're correct, we had a ordinance for Measure G, and there would be one for the commercial property transfer tax outlining details.
And then they have the same word limit?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then for the Measure G, did those, were those, if you recall, were those hearings special meetings? Or, I don't know if you recall how those, in comparison, just to see what the success rate is? Because we know Measure G passed. So what was the comparison as far as attendance at those meetings, if you recall?
Vice Mayor Mason, I do not recall whether they were special or regular meetings, but I also at this point do not recall if state law requires public hearings for general sales tax measures. I believe they do not, so I'm not sure that we had a public hearing for Measure G. So I'm not sure that that would be a sort of a, an apples-to-apples comparison.
Gotcha, okay. And would it be fair to say that more of the population will probably be, is being impacted by a sales tax than a commercial transfer tax?
Well, I don't know. I think anecdotally, that feels true, because the Measure G tax is a transactions and use tax that you pay for regular retail occurrences, as well as it is paid on these items. So for example, anyone in San Bruno buys a car, they pay that Measure G tax. The commercial property transfer tax is a tax that is limited to commercial property as defined as commercial. So I think the sort of casual understanding is yes, more individuals will slash are paid the Measure G tax that will pay the commercial property transfer tax. I do think that is true.
Right, and then just a final question on the Measure G was, do you recall if Measure G was supported by the entire council unanimously?
I'm trying, let's have the city manager conclude, but I'm trying to understand, we're on charter city and a transfer tax.
Right, some of the issues that Councilmember Salazar brought up are very similar to the exact way Measure G was handled. So I just want to address some of the concerns that were raised.
City Manager?
To the mayor, Vice Mayor Mason? I, I do not recall the actual vote from the council to place Measure G on the ballot that is a verifiable item that you certainly find out in the city council, but at the moment, I cannot.
Okay, great. Then a question for the city attorney, just around the concerns, I think with commercial versus residential, which are very valid concerns that Councilmember Salazar raised. Is, is there a way to be clear on that issue? Because I think it's very important that voters don't feel like there's a bait and switch happening here. And so how would you recommend that we be as clear as possible that this is really intended for larger commercial owners of property?
So the ballot measure, I believe the ballot language would specify, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Mason, the ballot measure would specify that the tax is for commercial property. And then it would be in the ordinance that you would have a definition of what constitutes commercial property. And then also, there would be a city attorney's impartial analysis. That impartial analysis usually is what's used to provide some of the detail that you can't fit in the seventy-five words, and that maybe isn't as detailed as reviewing the whole ordinance. So it would be there, and that, so the ballot, the ballot materials would provide the detail about what constitutes commercial, the specific definition being in the ordinance.
Okay, and thank you for that. And then just one more question and a comment, which is by, when, city manager, does this have to be decided by the council to be placed on the ballot? What's the latest meeting, I should say?
So the decision to place on ballot, as noted in the presentation, we have planned for an August 3rd meeting. What is required is two public hearings on the contents of the charter. It is important to note, as with other public hearings that we have on ordinances, for example, you, there cannot be a substantive change between the first public hearing and the, and the second public hearing. And if there's a substantive change, you may have to be the first public hearing. So if there are...
One to one and a quarter.
Important to have the city attorney, city attorney's analysis, is that, is that a substantive change which would require a new first public hearing? And so...
Okay. So I think I just want to address, I think Councilmember Salazar's, the issue he raised around just the public, I think it's a valid concern. And if there's nothing stopping us from doing so, is there, and this is a comment, but also I guess a question, and maybe it's a vote that's needed, I don't know, but why not just place it on next Tuesday's regularly scheduled meeting? And then, I know the end of the month is going to be busy because of budget, but on the first meeting of July's meeting is all. And it's an extra hearing, but considering nobody spoke today, it's not, it's not like it's providing, or, you know, asking for additional time of any of us, really. So that would just be a request of mine, just to address the concerns that Councilmember Salazar raised. Thank you.
So to the mayor, in regard to Councilwoman Vice Mayor Mason's question, there are notice requirements for public hearings. I do not, we will not be able to make the notice requirement for Tuesday's meeting. That may not preclude the city from placing a study session item with regard to a potential commercial property transfer tax or as a charter on subsequent agendas, as well as doing other community outreach. I will turn that over should the city council wish to direct that. I think we should have the city attorney on calling on the exact ability for that to happen. But as I stated before, for a public hearing, we have to be mindful of the state notice requirements.
Okay, so if, I got a regular meeting, but we have a number of special meetings planned, too. So just, just to address that concern, and we, there could be social media rollouts, it could be in the city manager's newsletter. So I would support those efforts. And maybe that just means that there's a third hearing. It may not be required, but there, I don't imagine that there's something stopping us from having a third hearing date. a third hearing date. Thank you.
And just before I turn it over to Councilmember Medina, you know, on June 14th, we do have a capital improvement budget. And as you know, we went through the general fund budget, it was about four hours. That could be a good two and a half to three hours on the 14th, just alone for that. And the other items of business, we talked about the city manager's newsletter, as we all know, that comes out at the end of the month. So, unless he has a special edition, that may not be possible. And I don't think City Manager Rogan is looking for a special edition to start happening. So, I want to be mindful, too, of that regular meeting and the importance of that one as well. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for their input on this very, very important issue here. I'll first address, you know, I think we all wish we had more people attending our meetings. Rarely do we get many more. Yet, it doesn't mean that we should be satisfied and not try better to get more people to attend and become engaged. So, as Vice Mayor Mason mentioned, whatever the city manager and staff could do to provide some additional notifications, even having another meeting, this issue is so important that it would be great to be able to get 5-0 going forward so that it's absolutely clear that the intent of this council is to be very strategic in limiting the effect of this measure on its residents and especially those, the single-family homeowners. And it's that important. And I think the mayor could, if he can help, clarify the memory, this is something we talked about a number of years ago. And I think at that point, it was decided a tax measure was the best bang for our buck. And it proves to be so, that that tax measure, Measure G, is closer to $4 million a year. And this item here is about $1 million a year. So, the council at that point decided to move forward with the tax measure. And here is this council still trying to figure out, how do we raise revenues without impacting the overwhelming majority of our residents? And this is how we do it. So, thank you for the question, Councilmember Salazar. I believe we'll be able to work through that. And increasing the attendance in the future is something that we should be looking forward to, not only for this item, but for all of our items.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, first of all, I wanted to thank Vice Mayor Mason and Councilmember Medina for supporting the idea of trying to get broader participation. I think we all agree that this is, it's a very important topic. And I also wanted to provide some clarification because perhaps my intent, the intent of my comments was misconstrued. But really, my concern is less around the tax measure itself, but it's really more around that tax measure within the context of a charter and being a new power that the city hasn't had in the past and what the potential implications are of implementing a tax measure that is really solely under the discretion of the city's charter. And so, I think comparing it to Measure G, while it was also a tax measure that was broadly supported, I think this one opens up the door to a few other things. And that is a concern, that there might be greater latitude afforded to either this council or some future council to make changes to those things, as well as other things that aren't specifically named. I mean, we made the conscious effort to address the labor issue. And that's been, I think, one of the issues that's been sort of confounding a lot of cities that are adopting charters, where if that's their intent, they're likely to fail because of labor's involvement in fighting those. So, but in other things where we remain silent, I believe that there is opportunity for those things to be changed, even without a modification to the charter. So, really, my concerns are around the process of adopting the charter and less around whether this will be a successful ballot measure. I think the polling showed that it's likely to pass. I don't think that participation in our meetings generally has any correlation to whether the ballot measure will be successful or not. For me, it's really about the process and making sure that residents have an opportunity and they're made aware that this is happening and not occurring in vacuum. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton, if it's with your permission, may I go to City Hall and then, thank you. City Manager?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Medina. I just wanted to respond to one thing that Councilmember Salazar said, because I totally understand the apparent conflicting with the information in the staff report and the presentation and the draft charter, saying that the charter does align to state law except where explicitly permitted. But then the other statement within the draft charter that provides sort of a very broad interpretation. And so, and that combined with my prior statement saying that the voters have control, what I was referencing was changing, changes to the tax. I do think, though, that because this is the first public hearing, the next public hearing that is currently scheduled for June 28th, what staff can do is work with the city attorney's office and provide a very clear, outlined articulation around what can be changed by an ordinance that future city councils could adopt and what within the charter can only be changed by voter approval. I do think provide a very clear articulation of that, which is not here now, would be helpful because certainly with regard to the tax and the ordinance that would be implemented and is required to be on the ballot, that cannot be changed without the voter approval. But there are other provisions that could be enacted by ordinance. And so, why don't we sort of suggest a hearing from council between first public hearing and second public hearing, provide a very clear articulation of that, as well as analysis around if there are any ways to tighten that further, because I do care that as a concern. And so, we'll, you know, we are certainly ready and prepared to do that were just so requested.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilmember Hamilton, and if anybody else, my colleagues have other comments to make, let's start putting the hands up now because I see we've gone around a few times, a couple times with folks. Councilmember Hamilton?
So, the city manager has a crystal ball, because that's exactly what I was going to ask for. The, Councilmember Salazar, I appreciate all of your comments and your concerns. One comment that you made when you spoke last was that, you know, the concern of putting the controls for this tax solely under the discretion of the charter. And, you know, I interpret that as being solely under the discretion of the voters, because the charter can't be changed without the approval of the voters. And my question was going to be, what, if any, new powers would the city council be granted under a charter that are not, you know, that are not explicitly spelled out in the charter? So, I absolutely am in favor of what the city manager just suggested, bringing that information back for our next meeting so that we can explore that.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Yeah, I just wanted clarity. So, there was a comment made by the city manager earlier. So, if there are any changes after the questions are answered for our next meeting, we actually, it sounds like we have to start the process all over again. Is that right?
To the Vice Mayor Mason, all depends on if they're substantive or not. And so, I think that's TBD. Based on the noticing requirements and the requirements to have two public hearings, there is not enough time between when we need to have those two public hearings and notify the county for substantive changes. And so, we would need to determine if there are any changes that the city council desires and if they are substantive in order to really answer your question.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my last question is just, we had had some discussion around the creation of a charter committee, and we said that that would be after the passing of the, you know, after the, hopefully the passing that this would be placed on the ballot and then hoping the public would approve it. But would that conversation just happen at a later time in the fall at some point?
Subject to direction from the city council, just to expound upon what you said, Vice Mayor Mason, it is true that at the May 29 study session, a number of potential ads or mechanisms or items that could be included in the charter were discussed. The city council had a discussion and made very clear direction that it would be a simplified charter with really the expressed intent being to allow a commercial property transfer tax. But there were members of the city council that said, well, should the charter be adopted, I would look forward to the city establishing a charter committee to discuss other things. I do believe that the intent of that discussion and those other things were things that would require voter approval and would have to go to the voters later. And again, we will provide a very clear articulation of, based on the wording, the draft wording that has been prepared for the charter, what can be changed ordinance and what as written would have to be changed by voter approval.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for bringing this back to us. This is, we've had a lot of large properties sold, so it'll be nice to get some of that revenue. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
So, and this might be, if it's possible, this might end up being substantive change that would start the process again. But I just wanted to ask, is it possible to include language in the charter that is ridiculously explicit stating that this charter does not grant the city council any additional powers over, beyond what they would be, what they're allowed under general law unless explicitly stated in this charter? Is that a provision that could be added to the charter to make it crystal clear that there's no end around, there's no sneaking, there's no potential ways of, now we can cast at ordinance that we couldn't have before, that sort of thing?
Who wants to take that question on by staff? And is Councilmember Hamilton anything else while I have staff?
No, and I understand that that might not be a question that could be answered right now and that might be part of the analysis that we've already asked to take place for our next meeting.
Understood. Okay, I'm seeing no other hands up from my colleagues. I wanted to, and so, I think everybody's had an opportunity a couple times, so I'd like to have my opportunity and bring some of my questions forward. One is, and again, Steph, I totally understand if it's not, you know, not getting answers, I'm just, maybe some of it's just some of the statements. I do, you know, I think it's 1%, right, that was raised for the transfer tax. How was 1% determined? I'm like, maybe Someteo has a half a percent. Why, when we're starting to gauge commercial as residential at the five unit, why was five marked and not 10, 20? Does that, and yes, City Manager, I know I tend to ask a lot of questions at once and it's a little, I'll pause after, but are we having a stumbling block in housing element? So, we have housing, let's say we have a nonprofit entity that wants to develop housing, and then there's a transfer tax that happens on this development. And so, we're trying to get housing, but yet can this also hamper us to be housing? So, that's some of my concerns about making it more difficult when we're being asked that it's hard enough to try to get housing and affordable housing, and now here we're putting this extra burden on budget. I'll pause there, but I have one. And if there's no answer, that's totally understandable, I'll just have my comments noted.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Medina, for those first three questions, why 1%? We did survey, as mentioned, 21 cities, and the cities that had a simple percent structure, it really ranged from 0.055% to 1.3% as we looked at what could be generated based on the sales over the past five years and talked with the city's ballot consultants. It was really determined that 1% was a simple structure that would not feel that the city was overreaching, it was something that people could easily calculate on what their tax rate would be with regard to the question of why five units, why not 10 units? What we analyzed is where would the threshold be vis a vis duplex, triplex, fourplex, et cetera? And as we looked at the actual commercial properties that transacted in, over the last five years, sometimes there was not a four-unit building that transacted or a five-unit building that transacted. And so, it seemed appropriate to start the commercial property tax at five units. I believe at prior city council meetings on this, it was mentioned that you could have an owner-occupied duplex or triplex, and with some larger properties, maybe having a unit within the property and adding an APU that sometimes even a triplex could really feel like an owner-occupied unit. And it just seemed, when we look at the potential revenue generation and the benefit to really exempt owner-occupied and a single-family home, or owner-occupied, five units is where we landed. With regard to the city's desires to achieve additional housing development and our housing element goals, would a commercial property transfer tax be an impediment? I'm not, certainly taxes can add costs to development, but without sort of more analysis on that, I really don't want to opine without really understanding and having a project to talk about.
Understood. And I know we're going to, this was in the presentation that we had about, you know, waiting for a bond to 2024 because of the fact of the voter turnout, which is unfortunately not, it's not well. You know, it's unfortunate, what we're going to probably see at turnout, but we're talking about waiting until the more appropriate time when it increases in the voter turnout in 2024. So, why would a tax which could be a negative, especially in this climate? You know, I just went to the gas station and it was over $6 a gallon of gas. So, I mean, would that not be of a concern?
Mayor, I want to be sure, I stay in my lane and not make statements...
And I know you don't control gas, Cos.
At professional staff, we want to provide...
I don't know about that, Mayor. No, I'm just playing.
At professional staff, we want to provide the city council with advice and analysis, but not necessarily conjecture on how things may be perceived by members of the public, but also really respect the very difficult policy decisions that the city council has to weigh. And so, whether a tax measure goes in '22 or '24, I totally understand that voter turnout is a factor. What I would respond to is from, there's a... What I would respond to is from, there's a slide in a presentation that we will see soon on our infrastructure bond that talks a little bit about the infrastructure needs for the city of San Bruno. And when, when, when the council directed that we institute development impact fees, what the analysis showed is that over the next 20 years, we need about $456 million to invest in our infrastructure development, and we know with impact fees can only pay their fair share in a portion. Development is paying about 35%. There's about $310 million that this city needs to find to fund its infrastructure needs over the next 20 years. And so, I do think, and I know the city council has directed this because of our fiscal sustainability project and all of the revenue strategies that you have is really taking a deep dive and recognizing our infrastructure and our financial challenges and saying, where can we look for additional revenue? Because there are certainly price sensitivities on all strats, right? Single family homes, commercial properties, everyone in the community, but, but we've engaged in this analysis and these revenue conversations because of the magnitude of the challenge that we face as a city. And, you know, deciding on what taxes are appropriate and what additional revenue measures we pursue, totally recognize are very challenging conversations for elected officials in the community.
Appreciate it, City Manager. I, obviously my question has sparked hands, so, because I'm trying to get through my questions, but, but, but I'm going to be switching gears, so we might as well get it while we're on this gear here before we switch gears. Councilmember Medina, then Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine's going to be really short. The data from the poll pretty much suggests that it's fine to go ahead in this election to proceed with this charter city. So, waiting for 2024 would mean two years of lost revenue.
Just asking the question. Councilmember Hamilton?
I had a similar comment, and then, the only reason I put my hand up was because, you know, the city manager, you know, said rightly so that, you know, the staff is, is just, you know, tries to say nonpartial on those, those types of questions and speculating on what the voters would think. The concern you brought up regarding, regarding the, you know, the price of gas and how that would have, and, and, you know, the, the general squeeze that we're all feeling and how that would affect folks voting on this, I think that absolutely applies to the, to a potential infrastructure bond, but not so much here because, you know, unless, unless that person, you know, owns a large commercial property, it's not going to affect them at all, and that's, and that's really kind of the whole point here, is to try to address that 300 plus million dollars of unfunded, unfunded need that we have in San Bruno without doing it on the backs of our, of our citizens. And this is, this is a need of doing that. You know, I like that the, the one example that I, that I will continue to dig into the ground was the, the Sky Park sale, which was, that was, that was nearly $700,000 that would have come to the city from literally the richest company on the planet. So, it would affect no, no one in San Bruno, except for all of us who would benefit, who would benefit from having those extra funds to put towards all those things. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Yeah, and I would just echo my colleagues in saying that, you know, to the idea of just waiting, this did come to us in 2020. I was the only council member that supported it moving forward. Since then, Amazon has purchased the property at Sky Park, YouTube has purchased property, and Tanfran has sold for almost over $300 million. So, we've had over $400 million of land sales just in the last two and a half years or so. So, I don't know that we want to wait any longer, and I think that the more support we have from the council, the more likely that this will be successful at the ballot box. Thank you.
Okay, hopefully my next round doesn't get more hands so that we can move on with the meeting as well. Another, another suggestion, and Councilmember Salazar raised it, Councilmember Hamilton raised it, and I know, not expecting an answer because it was going to come back, so I get that. And that's just in regards to the charter city and what it does allow. We've already addressed a little bit of public contracts, that came up, that was one of my concerns. When I say addressed, it was raised, so that's, that's out there. Payment of prevailing wages has been dialogued about. But, you know, there, there, whether it's legislative authority, whether it's finance and taxing power, et cetera, but as an example, as an example of what I think Councilmember Salazar was indicating and what I am, is council member compensation and a country reimbursement. Unless I'm misinterpreting this, attorney, you can tell me. Under a charter city, may establish, it says it may establish council member salaries. See California constitution, you know, our city is to provide any type of compensation. Currently, as a charter city, salary ceilings are set by the population and salary increases are set by state law, except for compensations established by city electors. So, in essence, there is, there is something. I think we've heard of the city of Bell. They set their own salaries. So, these are the type of things that are also, you know, it, it's great that my colleagues wanted to talk about, you know, hey, there's, there's potential for some one-time monies, but also all of the other elements that go around with the charter city is what I'm also looking at as well. So, I think that's, that's it. So, a lot of other things have already been said. And again, City Manager, and not looking for any comments because I think it goes back to some of the other questions the colleagues have asked that could come back. City Manager, with that said, is there anything else that you need from us at this time?
No, the, just to be clear, I think the, the main takeaway that we have, the city council is requesting additional information on what powers the city would have under the proposed charter, what can be in general changed by ordinance of the city council, and what would require voter approval. The next, the second public hearing on the contents of the charter is scheduled for June 28th, and the city council has already directed that we employ additional outreach efforts with regard to drumming up, hopefully, more members of the public that can either write in before the meeting or attend the meeting and articulate their desires to the city council. And so, we will certainly implement a more robust communication plan, and if that means doing another newsletter or a special issue or a special email, you know, whatever we need to do, but we hear you and we will implement that.
Thank you very much to everyone. With that said, we will conclude item six, which will bring us to item seven, which is our study sessions. We have two items. Item A is receive presentation and provide direction on potential November 2022 ballot measures guarding the elected mayor system and enact term limits to the elected mayor and council, and council offices. And we will turn this over to our city manager once again for his presentation, please.
Yeah, I'm at the podium once again, so, good evening Mayor Medina, members of the city council, members of the public. We are here to discuss two potential ballot items that the city council requested that staff look into. So, this is item seven A, a study session. So, our agenda is we will provide some background, we will review and propose language, discuss next steps, and of course, open for questions. And there's not a staff recommendation for, for these items. So, background, last year on October 26, 21, the city council held a study session to discuss several potential ballot items, and you directed staff to research and do a lot of policy analysis for you. And the two, again, that we're here to discuss is changing the mayor election system here in San Bruno and establishing term limits for both the mayor and council offices. So, why don't we begin first with a little history of the elected mayoral system here in San Bruno? And so, state law, we've been talking a lot about that. State law authorizes cities to select mayor by a vote of the people or by city council selection. We've done both in our history here in San Bruno. However, it's important to note that in 1977, a ballot measure, Measure F, established a elected mayor by the people in San Bruno. And that was a two-term mayor. That says the measure G, but I actually think that's measure, that should be measure F. But the mayor in San Bruno is, now runs every two years. It is a two-year term as per 1977. A vote of the people is required for the city council to select the mayor. If adopted by the people, the change would, would be prospective, and so it would not take effect until 2024. And so, because it was adopted by voters, it can only be changed by voters. And San Bruno, as we know, is currently the only city in the county with an elected mayor's position. So, now let's discuss term limits. And at your March 29th meeting of 2022, the city attorney provided a presentation and talked a little bit about the ebb and flow and the history of term limits in San Bruno, and I will highlight that briefly. So, in 1977, a bellwether year for ballot measures in the city of San Bruno, voters established a term limit of two consecutive four-year terms for city council members. In '79, in the fiscal year '79 and '88, courts in California invalidated term limits. The city repealed its term limit ordinance to comply with these court decisions and requested a court action to successfully validate that repeal, and that was codified in your meeting code, which is currently in place, 2.04.015. But state of California is frequently changing. In 1995, state law was amended to clearly authorize the establishment of term limits by a vote of the people, and so now term limits are legal in California. There are a number of cities that currently have term limits in, in San Mateo County. Foster City has a two, two consecutive four-year term limit, so eight years. Millbrae has the same. The city of San Mateo has three consecutive four-year terms. Redwood City has four consecutive four-year terms, 16 years. Pacifica has two four-year terms in total, whether consecutive or not. San Mateo has, the county has three consecutive four-year terms, 12 years, and the 15 remaining cities have no term limits. So, a bit of a mixed bag. Now, for a little bit more background, at your study session on March 29th, you discussed in detail a number of these, of your potential ballot measures, and with specific regard to this change in the mayoral position, you directed a few things. One, for the potential ballot measure, the mayor's position should rotate among the five district council members. The individual that would be selected to serve as mayor would be selected annually by the city council, and the mayor must be a member of the city council representing one of the five districts. A little bit of the same, but if we go through them individually, there, there are certainly nuances there. And this was your direction to staff as we prepared a potential ballot item for you. At that same meeting, with regard to term limits and that potential measure, the city council was very clear in stating that the service limit on the city council would be limited to three consecutive terms in a total of 12 years because for members of the city council, there are four-year terms. And the term limits would apply to all members of the city council, including the mayor. A little bit more background, the potential ballot measure, or whether term limits, mayoral change, or a combination of the two, it is important to note that placing that on the ballot requires three affirmative votes of the city council, so a simple majority of the five, and a simple majority of the electorate to pass. As you know, the city hired polling consultants, and at that March 29th meeting, we did provide a recommendation, which is that the city consider combining the measures, and that came from the city's polling consultant, really looking at the landscape, potential measures that the city was looking at and saying that combining them is totally legally possible, and it may streamline the ballot, but a, but a policy conversation for the city council. And the, the city would review proposal language for, the city developed proposal language for a separate and combined measure, and we'll talk about that. So, let's take term limits first. Should the city council decide on a standalone term limit ballot measure, we have provided a sample word, and I will read that. For terms starting after the effective date of this election, shall council members be limited to three consecutive four-year terms and the mayor be limited to three consecutive two-year terms with no limit on the number of terms served? We'll, we'll come back to that, or actually, why don't we do that now? So, three consecutive four-year terms, that is 12. Three consecutive two-year terms, that is six. This is a nuance that we just want to pause on because as a standalone measure, if there is no change to the mayoral selection process, it is important that your term limit, your term limits be very clear on what the term limits for council members are and what the term limits for the mayor is. It is a decision of the city council to align your term limits for the city council and have that be the same as the term limits for the, for, for the mayor, and make them both 12-year terms. And so, what that would be, if you wanted to align the mayoral term to three consecutive terms, it would be, or if you wanted to align the number of years, it would be six consecutive two-year terms, which would be a total of 12 years. But in the draft language, staff and the city attorney's office wanted to align with your direction, which was three consecutive terms. But know that for council members, if the mayoral election process is not changed and it's a standalone measure, if, you have a decision to make. 12 years for council members and 12 years for the mayor, or vice versa, but because the mayor currently has two-year terms, you just, you just need to adjust the number of consecutive terms. Okay. For a standalone item for elected, for the elected mayoral system, the city attorney's office has prepared a potential language, which is, shall the number of city council districts be expanded from four to five with the mayor chosen annually by, by the council from amongst its members rather than separately elected every two years? And so, that is, should this question to change the 1977 ballot measure to have five council districts and the mayor selected from amongst the council members? This is a language that does meet the SEC five work count and, and accomplish that. The next option is to have a combined measure, and that, an example of the wording of that is as follows. To reform local elections, shall, one, council members be limited to three consecutive four-year terms and the mayor be limited to three consecutive two-year terms with no limit on the number of terms served? And shall the number of city council districts be expanded from five, four to five with the mayor chosen annually by the council from amongst its members rather than being separately elected every two years? And again, there's the same question embedded here, is do you adjust the term limit and have all council members? have all council members have the total number of years of the council member and the mayor adjusted? Next steps, we would receive feedback and direction from the council tonight. Staff will prepare staff reports, resolutions, and ordinances for two separate measures or one combined measure. And again, this is draft language, we can certainly modify. Looking at it, certainly we can discuss modifications tonight, either for the standalone measures or the combined measures. We do not have the requirement for public hearings for this item, and so the language would not need to be final until the August for special meeting date, where the city council would provide final directions. So that concludes the staff presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, city manager. Questions from colleagues?
So thank you for the, for the presentation. The, looking at the, the option for combining, combining a measure, and I, and there was the recommendation that they, that they be combined, and we'd heard in the, in the previous session of the polling data, that perhaps the strong, yes, for, the strong support for term limits would carry the, the not-so-strong support for rotating mayor. Could the opposite also be true? If you combine those, if you combine those two measures into one, could the tepid, at best, support for rotating mayor that we saw in the polling data, bring that, bring it, you know, bring it down so that, so that term limits are no longer, would no longer be supported because people would be, would not want to be voting for the rotating mayor part?
That is possible for the mayor, Councilmember Hamilton, that is possible. And I was looking to see if our poll ballot consultants were still on, but they're not. That is certainly possible.
I'll do that. Okay. Thank you, that's all I have for questions. I have comments for later.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions on the presentation? Vice Mayor Mason?
Thank you. Should we be clear in the item, it's page eighty-two, but the, in the packet, and it's the language regarding terms? I'm just wondering if we should be clear that the three consecutive four-year terms result in a terming out, because then it goes straight to with no limit on the total number of terms served. So if I, I mean, if I didn't, you know, know a whole lot about what was going on, I might think, what exactly does that mean if we're saying limited to three consecutive four-year terms and the elected mayor limited to three consecutive two-year terms with no limit on the total number of terms served? It actually makes it sound, you could interpret it to mean that we're taking away term limits.
I want to ask our city attorney to apply, but if we're not able to answer that question now, we will certainly come back to the city council.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Mason, can you just point me again to the page that you are, that you're, the question is?
Yeah, let me scroll back up. So it's page eighty-two out of eighty-five, and at the top of the page, it says, discussion for the ballot measure regarding term limits only. The language could read as follows. For terms starting after the effective date of this election, shall council members be limited to three consecutive four-year terms, and the elected mayor limited to three consecutive two-year terms, with no limit on the total number of terms served? So I understand that, I'm just thinking, because we've been working on this, I'm just wondering, and this may even be for consultants, I just, with no mention of actually leaving the position, I wonder if that should be mentioned in here, and if there's room for that to be in here? Yep, that's it. Thank you.
So mention of leaving the position?
Yes, so the idea of the term limits is that you would serve three consecutive four-year terms, you have to step out and step away, and, but you're not forever, you know, excommunicated for terms of, like a better, for lack of a better term, you can go back and run again. And I just wonder if that is, if that would be clear based on the language here?
So it's clear from my reading of it, with the, this clause, with no limit on the total number of terms served, of course, your ballot consultants could help understand if there are other ways that's stated, but that is how I understand the language.
Can, are they still here, city manager?
No, city manager already said they're not here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, could I?
Please?
Just to help with this, with this particular question, when this was polled.
Mr. Hamilton? And I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure the vice mayor was concluded before, but I know it's on the same.
It's not to do with the vice mayor's question.
Councilmember Hamilton, maybe, I, I get, I completely get the question, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, that any, you know, any resident that is not involved in this conversation would also understand what it meant, that's all.
I absolutely get it, and what I was going to ask was, was this the language that was used when polling this question? That was always going to ask.
Yeah, no problem.
That might help speak to whether it's confusing or not.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I hadn't cut her off from having something else or expounding. City, city manager, and then Councilmember Medina?
Yes. So I'm looking at the survey now to answer the question, was this the specific language that was used when the question was polled for? The last, no, so the, with no limit on the number of terms served was not in the poll? This ballot question was developed after the poll was conducted. It's important to note that that last phrase may be important from a legal standpoint to make it clear that while there is a three consecutive term limit, there's no limit on the total number of terms. So you can serve three consecutive terms, have it sit out term, and then serve another three consecutive terms. I totally understand the question, and so we can work with legal counsel as well as our ballot consultant to take a look at that language and see, is there a way to have the clear legal, legal authority for there not to be a non-consecutive term limit in, in wording that is not potentially confusing? I think it's also worth noting that thankfully, we're not the first city to ever put in term limits, and there's lots of example of, lots of, lots of examples of ballot language out there, and so we will pull up other examples and confirm that language like this is either altered, or if this is a common language that is used.
Thank you. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, interesting conversation so far. It does get a little out there, but my question is regarding the mayor's six-year consecutive limit. I, I didn't catch on earlier that, that we were trying to limit a future mayor as only serving three consecutive terms of two years each. I, I think it should be the same as the council member said, it's twelve years. So if, if that could be modified, if the colleagues agree with it, I don't see why there would be that distinction between the mayor and, and the council member of allowing them to serve twelve consecutive years.
Thank you, is there any, having no feedback, or, but maybe it'll come after Councilmember Hamilton?
Back on the ballot language question, I believe, and this is just a suggestion when, when going back and figuring out if there's a better way to word it, I believe that the, that the, the ballot language allows for bold, bold or italic emphasis on certain words, and if it does, bolding consecutive and bolding total might be enough to kind of make it really be clear that we're talking about, you're limited to three consecutive four-year terms with no limit on the total number of, of terms served. This is just a suggestion, but I know, I know that the staff is going to go back to look at better choices, but I just wanted to suggest that, thank you. I'll save the rest of my comments for when we get to the discussion phase.
Thanks. Any other questions on the presentation? Excuse me. Why don't we see if there's members of the public that wish to speak on, on this topic on item A?
No hands are raised.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your help. All right, so let's bring it back to council for comments and direction, please. Councilmember Hamilton?
So I, I had the same concern that, that Councilmember Medina said as well, that the, you know, with, if the, if the, the process for choosing the mayor were to remain the same, I believe that the, that the equality should be not in terms, but in, in total number of years. So I would be more, more inclined to favor having it be, you know, six terms totaling twelve years, and to be in line with the, the three terms totaling twelve years of council members. And then regarding combining, with the potential for combining the two, I think the polling data was pretty clear on the, on the mayor question, and I would be, and it was also pretty clear on the, on the term limit question as well. And I would be, I, I would fear combining the, the measures so that, you know, something that the, the public is, we're getting good indications that they want, which is term limits, would not pass because of, including it was something that they, that they more really do not want, which is rotating mayor. So I would be in favor of having a standalone measure for term limits, and that's it.
You, other comments or questions? Or direction, I'm sorry, but any comments too? Councilmember Medina?
I like things that are separate when it comes down to giving our residents opportunity to vote. The individual issue could be, should be, stand on its own. So I'm in favor of, of them being separate measures. I, I do think that there was some more uncertainty in the question regarding the rotating mayor, that it was a little confusing if you didn't really even know that we were rotating mayors or how it worked, because I think it was like twenty percent of the, of the respondents said they, they didn't know, so I'm in favor of them separate, and going from there.
Thank you. Other comments for direction from colleagues? And I'm sorry, I might have written it down wrong. Councilmember Hamilton, I know what you said, separate, meaning standalone, that you want both items to go forward, that's where I got, I got the twelve-year thing, understood that, just, just so I, my answer right.
You know, before seeing the polling data, the answer would have been yes, but the, you know, the polling data is really, is really impacting my, my decision regarding the change to elected mayor system. It doesn't, it doesn't look like it, it has a, it has a chance, and I don't think it's good for, for anyone to put something on the ballot that is, that has a overwhelming chance of failing, just because, you know, people have a tendency, tendency, well, I don't like that, or maybe I don't like that either, and, you know, it could affect other things that we want to get done on the ballot, so. I am absolutely in favor of putting term limits on the ballot. I'm not in favor of putting elected mayor on the ballot at this time, solely because of the polling data.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure I noted, I appreciate it. Other comments or for direction from, other comments from colleagues for direction to Councilmember Salazar?
And I have a question I just thought of, but in general, when we, as a council, agree to put something on a ballot, there's voter information that is sent out, which in my opinion sometimes is biased, and being that these items are political in nature and not necessarily in, in direct benefit of cities' operations, I'm wondering what would the city's effort look like in relation to these? Would we make the same effort in mailing of brochures? Would this be advanced in any way? Would we do anything other than independent analysis for the voter guide?
And city manager?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Salazar, the city typically does public education around city ballot measures. I think that we would implement a basic public education effort similar to what is commonplace in other cities. Certainly, I, I would agree with you that the, the two items that we're discussing do not have a direct relationship to city operations, and certainly, I think, has significant political sentiment around, around them, and we would certainly be sensitive to that. I think in general, it's important for the city to provide basic public education around city, city measures, and I totally understand the comments you're making, as we develop our public information efforts, I certainly know that we would be sensitive to all concerns.
Okay, thank you. And just, just an observation around some of the comments that were made around the, the mayor versus the council members, you know, if a council member were to serve for twelve years and then run for mayor and had twelve years there, that's twenty-four years of, of service, as part of the elected body, so that, that I think exceeds anything we've seen from anybody in, in history of, in the history, in the recent history of San Bruno, so I, I don't know at that point if it even has any effect, so something to consider. I, I'm generally not in favor of the term limits anyway. I've seen plenty of years where few of no people show up to run, it's kind of a thankless job, and so I think if people are willing to continue volunteering, they should be allowed to do so.
Thank you, council member. Any other feedback or direction to, to staff? Vice Mayor Mason?
So it's been broadly known that I support the idea of the rotating mayor and the term limit ballot initiative. The "I" became a "we" when a minimum of three council members agreed that these were measures we wanted to look further into, and this, this whole idea had originally been brought up in twenty twenty and didn't receive the support until the election of one of our recent council members in last, in twenty, I want to say in the last election. In fact, it really was always a "we," since this was an item that I ran a campaign on, I went on, and I'm representing what I ran to do. Since its inception, it's been part of our presentation, following through on campaign promises. While it would have been ideal to have both items on the ballot, the reality is that our polls don't show that both would be successful, so I'm going to break the following down into two groups. The term limits, the immediate response I received when I talk about term limits is, but we have term limits. It is then clarified that we have terms, but no limits on the terms. It's rare to have a member of the public, after hearing that, deny that there should be limits on the terms, the number of terms that the number of terms that council members or mayors or any elected official serve on. Per the survey, there appears to be support, and I would be in support of moving this item forward. The rotating mayor item. Unfortunately, there's not enough space on the ballot to explain that the office of the mayor, in accordance with our ordinance, is to facilitate meetings and appoint committees. In my conversations with so many, they're so surprised that the mayor is not a full-time position, does not have additional powers than anyone else on the council, and costs the city a minimum of $10,000 every two years by having a separate item on the ballot. Not to mention the additional staff time it takes to manage a separate position and the cost of their time to manage not just the position, but if there's a competitor, the resources and any complaints that arrive due to that competition in that particular election. A rotating mayor would provide an opportunity for each council member to rotate into the office, remove that cost, remove the administrative burden, which although sounding nominal, has cost the city over $300,000 since the 1970s. Further, the mayor role has no role in the day-to-day operations of the city. It's the city manager. Lastly, it seems to work in the nineteen cities surrounding San Bruno, with one city having moved to an outlarge mayor only to move back to the rotating mayor model and another recently taking on the change with significant controversy. With all this said, my ultimate responsibility is to the voters, to those who are not able to vote. While disappointed in the survey results, I have to believe that this item is not likely to be successful at this time. The funds that would be expended on this item can be better spent on other needs within our city and revisited at a later time. I just hope it doesn't take another fifty years. I would not support the item of the rotating mayor to be on ballot at this time, provided the survey results. I would support the term limit item to be on the ballot at this time. And I think that's it. And I would just say that we did have a council member when I ran that had been on for twenty-four years. And I believe our mayor is going on many years, right, Mayor Medina? I want to say twenty-two years?
No, and please don't age me.
Okay.
Anything else from anyone else? What I do want to circle back, if I can, is on term limits, since my belief is, and again, this pleases, is to correct me, but I think the question was asked or was brought up, trying to bring Marty back, is one of the things the city manager asked was the three consecutives, right? And then it was three consecutives for twelve, and there he comes back, and then for the mayor. So I think city manager would want to get direction from the council as, do you want it three, four-year terms for council and three two-year terms for mayor? Or do you want it to be at the same twelve and twelve, if that makes sense? I think I heard from councilmember Hamilton, and I heard from councilmember Medina, but I wanted to see if there was other thoughts on that specific question, because I think that will help us move the process forward. And I understand, councilmember Medina.
Yes, as I stated earlier, I think they should be the same amount. And if somebody is that willing to run twelve years as a council member and twelve years as a mayor, then so be it.
Okay, so twelve and twelve. Okay, I got it. And Mr. Hamilton had said the same thing. Yeah, thumbs up. Is there any other comments from colleagues for direction to staff on the twelve or twelve, or not wishing that, or?
So.
Go ahead.
To the mayor. So just let me recap. I think the.
Yes, thank you.
There are a, I believe the majority of the city council. I am, based on people that have stated their desire to move forward with term limits, I have that being councilmember Hamilton, councilmember Medina, Vice Mayor Mason. So three to move forward on term limits. I have councilmember Salazar as a no, and mayor, I don't think either expressed one way or the other.
That's fair.
And that is a, for twelve total years for the council and the mayor's position. And we would adjust the language to align to that. And so we will take that direction and majority directed to move forward with term limits, amend the language so that the total number of years is aligned between the mayor and the council office. As well as, there was a discussion about the last portion of the proposed ballot language that says in no limit on the number of terms, thinking that might be confusing. And so a request, I would look at that, and we will do that as well.
Does anybody disagree with the summarization right now of what city manager had stated? Do you think he got it pretty well? Okay. City manager, as always, you do very good about bringing it all together. Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, I did want to ask if the, to the city attorney if we can take a motion on these items, to ask for a vote?
The chair melted. Sorry. It says by direction. So I think direction has been provided. It wasn't agendized for action, but the attorney, of course, knows better than I.
I think.
You're on.
I'm just looking at the agenda really quickly, Mr. Mayor. I think if the, if the city manager is comfortable with the direction given, then that closely reflects what's on the agenda. You know, if there's, so I think that that's probably the best way to go. And it doesn't clearly state that this is an action item, although, you know, arguably, when you do, when you give direction, you do that by, you know, showing a vote of the, or an agreement among the members.
And I want to make clear, this item's coming back for a motion, a second, and a vote, which then is clearly defined, if that's the question. So it has to come back for a vote, and it has to receive three affirmative votes.
Right.
And they will be on record as far as where they, if they want a yes or no to term limits.
Right. But we have two items before us seeking direction, and I think it should be clear what the vote is. And I think that the last time this came up, I asked for more detailed minutes. And one of the comments that one of the council members made was, well, then we should have taken a motion. And so I think we should take a motion.
Okay. So on term limits, the city, okay, let me go to this. I was going to say, is that on the term limits, there is a majority. I think the city manager articulated. On the mayor is what I think you're maybe referring to, and you have a point on the rotational, because I only.
I'm just pointing, Mayor Medina, I don't want to be disrespectful, but that wasn't, I think everyone's clear on the consensus. The question is legally, can I put a motion on the table?
I think almost anytime you can put a motion on the table, honestly, I think. But again, you know, that's why we have somebody else here in the Zoom meeting with us. This is an ask for direction, and it has to come back for a yea or nay vote, period. So that's why I'm not, but anyway.
Mayor Medina, I will just clearly answer that I think that if Vice Mayor Medina Mason wants to put a motion on the table to provide clear direction with the vote, I don't see a concern with that.
No. I mean, anybody can probably bring up a motion. I'm just saying, we're going to have to go through this motion again. So that's. So whatever the reasons are, or whatever concerns there are, I think we have had an answer for the. So, okay, next.
Okay, so put a motion on the table to move forward with the ballot measure for term limits? And direct staff to look into the items that we've represented tonight and come back to us with, I guess it would be a final ballot measure that we would then vote on to place on the ballot.
I'll start now.
Okay, Mason, Marty Medina, motion seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Oh, wait, hold on, hold on.
Just a point of order.
Yeah, correct. On the question, councilmember Salazar.
So the motion includes both ballot items, or is it one ballot item?
The first, the first motion is just term limits.
Just term limits. Thank you for clarifying.
Uh, thank you, and roll call.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
No.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Rico Medina.
No.
Great, thank you. And then the second motion is to direct staff not to do any more work on the rotating mayor item for the reasons described tonight by council members.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion seconded, Mason, Hamilton, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
I just wanted to understand what was the motion again. I'm sorry.
No problem.
To direct staff not to work any further on the rotating mayor item.
To not work. No.
Councilmember Salazar.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mason. Mayor Rico Medina.
Yes. Okay. I think that concludes, and city manager, unless you have anything to say, I think it concludes truly item A. Let's move on to item B. Oh, I saw your hand up, Vice Mayor, but I know it's from before. Item B, receive presentation and provide direction on the possibility of an infrastructure bond on the November 2020, 2022 ballot. City manager.
Okay, thank you, mayor. We are just switching over PowerPoint, but we have third direction on the last item. And let us begin slideshow from the. Mayor Medina, city members of the city council, members of the public, our last study session item of the night is regarding the feasibility of a, of an infrastructure bond for the November 2022 ballot. And so we've already received the results of the likely voter poll that was conducted and the conclusion that it does not reach the two-thirds requirement and may not be viable. But we did want to have a study session, seek direction from the city council. Public Works Director Matt Lee is here and able to provide any additional information that may be needed as well. So we'll go through a background, we'll recap our prior effort in 2021. We will talk about the community survey, the survey results, and the next steps. So not a long presentation. So what is an infrastructure bond? That is the point. So an infrastructure bond is a type of financing that is a long-term borrowing that state local governments use to raise money primarily for long-lived infrastructure assets. It's also important to note that as a municipality, we cannot just go off and take on debt without a vote of the people. And so that is required by state law, because we would be pledging the full faith and credit of the city's general fund, and state law requires explicit voter approval for that type of financing. And so just why an infrastructure bond? For the city council, this was a follow-up from our effort in 2021 to obtain additional funds for the city's storm water system. That's nearly a hundred-year load, and we know has significant financial needs, far outstripping the amount of the current fee and the city's ability to fund those. There was a study done in, I believe, 2017 that noted we needed to spend immediately $30 million on the infrastructure and the asset, and the city has not had, does not have the resources for that. The current storm water fee that raises approximately $42 per home does not recover enough cost for operating or capital cost of the system. Because this effort failed in '21 and the funds projected to go negative, in the current budget that we sit in, the city's storm water fund was to be a million dollars short. The city thankfully, in the current year, was able to close that gap by the use of federal dollars due to the COVID-19 revenue loss. However, as the city council knows in our proposed budget for next fiscal year, there is a more than a million dollar shortfall in our storm water fund, and we do talk about that a lot. But we did meet in October 26 of last year to talk about options for moving forward, and the city was directed to look at a potential infrastructure bond. And so just a quick result from the Prop 218. Important to note that was a valid ballot, per state law that had to be mailed to every property. And it was a property owner vote. Important to distinguish that from the effort that we're talking about, which is an infrastructure bond, that is an item that goes on the ballot and every registered voter has the opportunity to vote on that. But last year's effort was a, was a effort to increase the current property assessment or parcel fee. The election was conducted on June 15, and the results are shown with 1,833 yes votes, almost double of that, but 3,310 no votes, a number of eighty-three rejected votes. And so the item, which required a simple majority, property owners did not pass. And so, as I stated, when we met last October, you directed to look at an infrastructure bond. Just want to take a moment to talk a little bit about the city's infrastructure needs. You know, this conversation is specific to a potential November 2022 item. And we can, we can speak for hours. And in fact, when we talk about our capital improvement budget and have other presentations, we in fact do speak for hours on the city's infrastructure needs. But just at the high level, I just want to remind the public that the city did analyze its infrastructure needs over the next 20 years when it made the really proactive decision to implement development impact fees, so that new development pays its fair share. And so for this presentation, we wanted to pull a page out of that report from February of 2019 just to highlight at a very global level, the city's infrastructure challenge. And so the study conducted by Will Dan analyzed all of our infrastructure needs, and on the left-hand column, there's a number of categories. Our community service facilities, our public safety facilities, general facilities, general government facilities, utilities, and transportation. And the total need that we have and that we know we need to spend over the next 20 years is $457 million. And with a development fee program that the city implemented, it ensures that development pays its fair share of those costs. And the projected amount that development will pay is for $147 million. And that leaves a remaining need that we need to fund as a city of $310 million. And so as we talk about an infrastructure bond in all of the facilities and utilities and government facilities, we know, because we have had these conversations in very long, intricate detail, that we have a significant infrastructure challenge and a significant financial challenge. And so when we set about our fiscal sustainability project, when we talk about a potential commercial property transfer tax, when we talk about measure G that was successfully adopted, it is really going toward this very large number. And we know the challenges that the city has in just closing its operating budget each year. And so our ability without additional sources to cover this $310 million is a very large feat. And so part of the reason why we set about this conversation and the likely voter poll for a potential ballot measure in November 2022, and as you received earlier tonight, the city hired Goddard Research and hired a ballot consultant to prepare a survey, work with your council subcommittee, and evaluate the feasibility and the likelihood that voters in San Bruno may be willing to support an infrastructure bond that would come with additional charges on the property tax bill to pay for that bond. uh, that would come with, uh, additional, um, uh, charges on the property tax bill to pay for that bond. Um, uh, and, uh, we heard the results this evening. Um, and so, uh, residents were asked about upgrading, uh, fire stations, uh, ensuring that, uh, operation, uh, that those facilities are operational uh, during earthquakes and natural disasters. Um, as the city council knows, we have two of the oldest, uh, unretrofitted fire stations in the county uh, and have an active project to begin the design on replacing Fire Station Fifty-two. Uh, but at this point, uh, we do not have the funds, as we sit today, to construct that. Uh, modernize, uh, the San Bruno Library for children teams, uh, adults and senior programs, uh, was another, uh, component of the survey. Uh, improve neighborhood parks, ballfields, uh, playgrounds, uh, so that they are safe, clean, and, uh, uh, surfaces that, that, that all, uh, could be protected. Uh, and repair our, uh, deteriorating storm drains for flooding and, and water pollution. And so, uh, as you heard earlier today, the survey was conducted, uh, the bond tested, um, uh, really came back with a conclusion that it's not viable, uh, at this time based on, uh, the poll results, and it would not engender the two-thirds support that is required for an infrastructure bond, uh, on the November twenty-two election. Uh, it also revealed that our, our residents are price sensitive, uh, with regard to, uh, future bond measure, and the consultant talked, uh, earlier today about just larger things that are affecting, uh, the economy, gas prices, um, uh, and, uh, voters' perception of, uh, will the economy get better in the short term? Uh, and a, a strong majority of voters, however, um, do prioritize capital improvements, and, and, and we, we hear that anecdotally. We, uh, we heard that, uh, even in the response to our Prop two eighteen, voters want the city to maintain infrastructure. Um, it, it, it's how we pay for it, that, that, that we all know is a challenge. Uh, and, uh, while it does appear that the bond measure, uh, if placed on the ballot, would not engender enough support, uh, the survey did reveal that San Bruno residents, uh, would prioritize funding for streets, roads, fire stations, storm drains, uh, parks and libraries in that particular order. Uh, so it provided us with, uh, uh, some, some, some really good input. And so we're here to talk about the next steps, right? Uh, we've been here before, um, uh, with, um, uh, revenue measures that, uh, appear not to be successful, uh, and we wanted, uh, to discuss the next steps. Uh, certainly is an option of the city council to proceed and charge ahead with a potential November twenty-two ballot measure uh, for infrastructure, uh, but what the polling says is that, that's not likely. Uh, the consultant did mention, uh, particularly looking toward November twenty-four, where the, uh, the electorate will be a little bit different, um, uh, the demographics of the electorate will be a little bit different. But what November twenty-four also allows, uh, allows us to do as an agency, uh, you, you as, um, uh, elected officials representing the community, uh, and city staff is really, uh, continue our education efforts, um, uh, to, develop, um, a, um, a, a more articulated message uh, in advance of doing the polling, um, uh, to really educate, uh, our, uh, community on the city's infrastructure needs. And, uh, you should just know internally, uh, staff has had these results for a few days now, and have had a number of meetings about efforts that, uh, whether you decide to charge ahead, um, uh, or, uh, look toward a, a, a later date for a, a ballot measure. Uh, I, I think we've had some really good conversations on, uh, tours and, uh, conversations, both small and large, that we can begin to have with the San Bruno community, uh, about our infrastructure challenges, because we all know, and I, I, I know you don't because we, we, we talk about it so much, that they're great. Uh, and, and right now, uh, they are, and they're valuable with the resources that we have available to us. Um, and so that concludes, uh, the, the presentation, uh, and would like to just, uh, open it to the city council for discussion and direction, uh, with the information that you've invited tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, colleagues, questions on the presentation? Questions on the presentation only? Not seeing any, um, any members of the public wish to make a comment at this time?
No hands are raised.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to coun- sorry, bring it back to council for, uh, comments and direction, please. Wow, we all got quiet. No direction? I, I will say that quiet would tell me, uh, for staff not to proceed, I guess, but, uh, um, just want to double check, uh, Councilmember Medina.
So, so clearly, um, we are in a difficult spot. And thank you, City Manager, for the reminder of, of, of how difficult it is to maintain our infrastructure. And with the revenues that we have, now we don't, we, we can't do it, and, uh, the polls pretty much put an exclamation point on that. So going forward, it's, it's going to be difficult. Um, I'd, I'd like to add a little bit of, of, of my viewpoint on it. You know, COVID, COVID not only was a devastating thing to happen across the world and, and it also kept us from, from doing more with Measure G. And, and I think that this council, um, this city is, is, has been working very hard on, on getting the revenues to do more, do all the things that our residents want, and we weren't able to do that, um, with, with Measure G funds because we had to reallocate them to other areas that, for the basic services that we needed, with fire and police and, and, and everything else. So I, I think as we move forward to twenty twenty-four, um, we, and it's my understanding that there is, and maybe, um, the City Manager can speak briefly on it, is that we're looking at one of the largest, um, paving projects in recent history. That, that is planned. Um, I believe, I believe, um, the, the Oversight Committee is, has heard about it, and, and I'm looking forward to approving the six, approximately sixty million dollars of, of paying, um, projects i- in the city. So, um, it's a reality that we're living in. It's why this council in the past has tried to find ways to raise revenues and why it's so important that this charter city be approved so that we, we have additional funds. So, with that said, I'd love to hear what my colleagues think, because this is a huge thing. You know, we, we know we need these funds. We're limited in how we can raise them, so what are we going to do? I can't hear you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I, I turned my head, I'm sorry. This is again, direction on the infrastructure bond on the November twenty twenty-two ballot. Let's, the City Manager, if we could, uh, try to stick to that element of it and sti- stay within the ballfield, shall we say? I'll use, uh, for, for, uh, Councilmember Medina's analogy, or even the ballfield.
Sure, uh, just in general about a tax measure, then I only step back to the podium because, uh, Councilmember Medina, uh, brought up Measure G and, and asked for, for clarification. Absolutely, at the beginning of the pandemic, uh, in order to, uh, to not have additional layoffs and, um, practically police officers and firefighters and, and, and key positions, the city did allocate, uh, two million dollars of Measure G funds, uh, to, to not have additional, um, um, staffing positions be on field. Um, um, and, and to prevent layoffs, let me be clear about that. Um, however, what the, the council member said is, is absolute truth. Um, uh, in your proposed budget, uh, there is, uh, approximately five point six million dollars, uh, that would, that is proposed to be allocated uh, to roadways. Uh, Measure G, uh, was initially projected to bring in a four million dollars a year. We have not hit that because it was adopted in COVID. Uh, and so in, in years, we received, um, sometimes, um, between two and a half and three million. We're inching back up to four million, um, but absolutely, it is the city's commitment, uh, to, uh, utilize those, those general purpose funds uh, for, for roadway maintenance, uh, and, uh, uh, key, uh, critical items in the city, and, uh, certainly, uh, with the, uh, five point six million dollars uh, that is proposed to be allocated, we'll be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hamilton?
So, I mean, I'm a- I'm absolutely in favor of the city passing an infrastructure bond. That's the, the, you know, the, with, with all of the needs that we have, and with, you know, looking at, even at the highest level, we're look, we're talking eleven dollars a month per household to, um, to fund it. Um, I think that's a good, uh, I think that's a good use, you know, speaking as a, as a resident, I think that's a good use of my, of my household budget. Just like I thought that, that, um, the, the stormwater was a good, uh, uh, good use of my household budget, then I voted yes on that. Um, you know, and, and I'm also, because of my en- engagement with the city before I was on council and now being on council, I, 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 I know how, how deeply we are in need of, of, um, revenue to fund all of the, all of our, all of our needs. Clearly, the, 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 the public is not, does, does not share that, um, that same view in, in, uh, in enough numbers to make this feasible. So, you know, once again, as, as I said earlier this evening, I would reluctantly, um, support abandoning this for now, um, and not proceeding from putting this on the ballot, simply based on the, on the polling data, because there's, there's no point in putting something on ballot, um, if it's, if it's destined to fail and, um, potentially having that on the ballot could potentially negatively affect other things on the ballot that, that, that may not fail. Once again, this al- this also underscores the need, and, and, you know, the polling for this and the polling for, for Charter City kind of underscore, underscore that, you know, at this time, folks understand that we need money, they're just not, uh, not in the position to, um, to pay for it themselves. And that's, and I believe that's why, in my opinion, I believe that's why the Charter City pulled, pulled, uh, much higher than this.
Thank you. Any other hands? One last go around for hands. Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, in, in thinking about this and, and where it might fit into a future, uh, election, are, are we aware currently of any other, uh, bond measures that may appear on the twenty-two ballot? Uh, and looking forward, I know it's probably too far to, to know, to have heard what other, um, agencies might be doing, but do we know if the county or the school districts are doing anything in twenty-two that might, um, either help or, or further hurt uh, what we're seeing with, with this potential measure?
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Salazar. Uh, we do know that the county is looking into a revenue measure uh, to support the new, uh, sea level rise and, uh, resiliency a- agency, uh, as well as, uh, potentially fire mitigation. Uh, but that will not be an infrastructure bond. That's, that's another, um, uh, financing mechanism, potentially even a parcel tax. Um, with regard to our local schools, we have not heard that any of our local school districts are proposing an infrastructure bond. Uh, and so we do not know that in San Bruno, there will be a infrastructure bond on the ballot, um, for November twenty-two. What happens in November twenty-four and if other agencies are going, it is, you know, too far for, for us suspended.
Okay. And, and really, the, the, the risk to us of putting this on the ballot is, uh, the, the cost, and then it fails, and it goes nowhere. But is there, do we anticipate that there would be, you know, political fallout that would then play into, uh, the success in, in four years in, in the, into the future? Or is it worth trying and then, uh, in the meantime, engaging in, uh, a, a public education thing? Uh, perhaps focusing the message on where the, the most critical needs are? I, I, I believe we may have hurt ourselves in, um, offering up too many possibilities. I, I think Measure G was, was partially successful, one, because we put a heavy emphasis on roads, which happens to be the, the favorite topic of, of most of the people surveyed. And second, uh, we included the Oversight Committee, which, uh, uh, according to the poll, also, uh, our, our constituents don't necessarily trust us in how to spend the money, so having the Oversight Committee may have helped, um, you know, address some of those concerns. So if there was anything we could do to perhaps focus our scope and, uh, make, um, commitments that, you know, that the funds would be, uh, used to address those issues, uh, first and foremost, uh, might help improve those numbers. I mean, we're, we're close, uh, we're close to that, that sixty-six percent, um, and, and maybe, uh, a real strong push could, uh, could get us there, and we could start addressing these issues sooner. I mean, I, I'm really concerned about storm drains. We, we've been talking about this for a decade, and, um, you know, uh, waiting another four years is, is not, uh, probably not the best tactic we can, we can and, and there, there really is no other, no other source. Even if, um, the property transfer tax goes through, um, that's not even going to put a dent in it. So, um, we need, we need to really address it, and, uh, th- this might be the only way to do it. So maybe it's a Hail Mary, but, uh, uh, it, maybe it's worth a try.
So, uh, through, through the mayor, um-
City Manager, then Councilmember Medina, then Council, the other Medina.
Sure. Uh, so in response to, uh, Councilmember Salazar's question, um, all of you know me well, uh, you, you know, um, my municipal, um, financial consulting background, um, and, um, how concerned I am about the city's finances and our infrastructure for I would love nothing more to be standing here to say, uh, there's a viable opportunity, uh, to move forward with, with an infrastructure bond. The need is that great, uh, and I think we need to be pursuing in this city every last opportunity, uh, we have for additional revenue, um, uh, for the organization and the infrastructure, uh, uh, because, um, our infrastructure and operational needs are, are, are extremely significant. We, 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 we just saw the chart nearly, um, a week ago, and we, uh, a week ago tomorrow, um, where we have some, we have these, um, second lowest per capita income for the city of San Bruno amongst our peer groups in the county. Um, um, our ballot consultants are not here, but, but we asked that question. Um, can we charge ahead? Uh, and the, the analysis is from the professionals that do this up and down the state, with significant experience in Centele County is, based on the polling, um, you're actually not close. Um, you, uh, and you can't make up enough ground, and with the margin of error, um, uh, in the poll, there's just not enough ground to make up. Uh, and there's also, also significant downsides to putting out, um, revenue measure after, um, revenue measures that don't pass because then you, um, sort of get the reputation of, of the, the city that, that doesn't adopt revenue and revenue measures and, um, and, and additional new sources, and that sort of has a snowball effect. Um, and so, uh, the, the professional re- uh, recommendation from our consultants, as well as, uh, the, your city managers to unfortunately, uh, take a step back from the infrastructure bond conversation for November twenty-two, uh, look at all other possible sources, uh, for revenue, uh, that can be used for, 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 for infrastructure. Um, uh, but specifically for an infrastructure bond, um, don't stop the effort, um, but, um, and really proceed toward looking not four years out, uh, to, to twenty-six, or two years out to twenty-four. Uh, and for, for example, um, uh, there's, um, the city, the city's library, which is just behind me, um, council knows this, but the public may not. Uh, there was a study done in the, there's a, there was a study done, um, where a group of residents that got together, um, and the library was essentially, um, determined to be functionally obsolete in the late eighties. Um, and, uh, one of the things we know from the, from the polling and looking at the demographics, uh, uh, our library polled in the fifties, um, the, the, the mental low fifties support in the community. Um, and, and I, I do think that that is because the San Bruno, uh, likely voter public that was surveyed may look at the library as not a place for them. Uh, and so I, I think we have some ground to cover on educating our community of what a modern library is, how a modern library provides services and respite and places for seniors, and it's not just books and shelves where you go to read. Uh, and, uh, I think we have some ground to cover in, in educating and communicating to our community on what our infrastructure needs are because they're- on what our infrastructure needs are, because there are those sort of hard infrastructure of streetlights, stormwater utilities, fire stations. But then there are also service-based facilities. And I think a communication with our residents about what modern facilities provide and that there is a place for them in a facility like a library will be helpful to us. And I think we have some time to do that if we look toward November '24.
Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, city manager. You've covered a lot of the things that, in response to how difficult it is right now. The other big difference is, you know, Measure G passed because it only needs 50 plus one, right? It needs a simple majority, bonds need a lot higher number than that. And in the meeting with our consultant, I asked, like, are we, how far off are we to go yes? And I believe the answer was, you needed to be, you know, that margin above, so like at 70% to kind of go, hey, yeah, let's go for it. You know, it's possible. But, you know, it was clear that with the numbers we got, that there's no point. There's no appetite for it. So, you know, what was interesting there about, you know, if it was less costly, that it got much more support. But I think, I think we, I think we should, we did a hail Mary last election, and now we're, I don't know, we're going to try a fleet letter on this one. You know, like, it's just, it's just such an overwhelming thing to go through. And, I mean, and in the climate that we're dealing with right now, I mean, the gas prices, everything's going up. You know, I went to go visit my dad today in Salinas, and we went to Denny's, right? Because that's where he goes, right? Because I can't bring him to San Bruno every time I want to. But, you know, Grand Salon breakfast was $12.99. And I was like, whoa, you know, Big Joe's is like a dollar more and way better, right? But it's just the reality of everything being so expensive and with the way things are going, you know, it just wasn't our time. Maybe I'll use what was at the last meeting to start, or maybe that was another meeting. But it's just not our time. You know, we, we, we got to do the best that we can with what we have, and we're seeing that it is still going to be difficult. And we keep our fingers crossed that a storm covert doesn't blow up somewhere, you know, and it will though. Something stupid's going to happen, you know, a bank of lives, you're going to go out. We have a 100-year-old city, and we haven't been maintaining it as well as we should have. And now we're dealing with having that consequence. So there's no magic ball, there's no silver bullet. Every resource that we're looking for has been on the table and hopefully we'll keep on the one and doing the best we can.
Any other comments from colleagues? Last chance. City manager, Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, so I pulled what I have. So I think that we also still have, I think the council still has a lot of legwork to do around identifying the parameters. So some of you might recall that a number of residents pleaded for a sunset in the last item. We also are still trying to get all the funds we can without going into resident pockets. We don't have closure yet on the short-term rentals and cannabis issues. We haven't really discussed Oversight Committees in depth. And I think in addition to that, we really have an opportunity to show to the public that all of us, I think, are handling the current projects responsibly with their money, right? So the RAC, although that's PG&E money, I do consider that money that is for the benefit of the entire San Bruno population due to how those funds were acquired. And, you know, it's really imperative that we move forward with transparency and we remain invited on that particular project, along with Measure X, that was supported by all of the voters on the Allen property that's looking great and scheduled to open. We have Measure G that Councilmember Medina mentioned, and due to COVID, we haven't seen a lot done with those funds. We also haven't gotten as much as expected due to COVID. But we, yeah, if I was just a resident that's not watching our three-hour meeting once a week, I would just be looking at my streets, wondering what's going on, right? And so I think there's an opportunity there to see how these funds are being spent over time. I think in the same way that I didn't support the prior item tonight because the numbers were simply not there, I can't support this item moving forward for the same reason. This has been waiting for 20 years. It's really unclear why this has not been addressed sooner by the leadership. But here we are, as Councilmember Hamilton said, and the opportunity to show results in the items listed above can be identified as proof that the public funds are being expended responsibly and that projects are needed and hopefully will be finished and visible by then. And that won't be in this option and that won't be in this November cycle. The vision for our library is great. We need to really envision something greater for our library, including what our library could be and how it could serve everyone. I recall a meeting where a previous council member said during one of our meetings that they don't even go to our library, they just go to the neighboring city library and that's where they would take all their kids. There's simply no reason for that. We need to really consider when the best opportunity is for these measures, identify what has not worked previously and address them so that the public supports these items because they do see the vision and they see themselves as part of the vision and not just because we phrased a ballot item with the right rhetoric to get their vote. Lastly, we're still recovering from COVID. In fact, the numbers are again peaking. The concentration is still focused on recovery and for some survivability with the cost of housing, gas and groceries and so much more going up. We really should also be striving for grants. I don't think that the opportunity for grants should end if this item doesn't move forward, which is another item that, you know, we should have an update on at some point, which is our grant writer. But, you know, more funds should be applied for as possible. It's not going to be what we need with a bond measure. But in addition to that, any additional aid that might be coming through as a result of COVID. But at this time, the numbers really lean through something that just seems that it's not feasible and would not be successful and would cost us funds to place on the ballot. So that's my reason. And whenever we're done with this, I will also be placing a motion on this item. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Last call. I'm going to ask some comments and then we'll go to Vice Mayor Mason.
So I understand about the supermajority, and it is very challenging and difficult. I sometimes think that we do have too much within a measure, and I think that's like Measure F, there were just too many things. And the general, the public starts to say, well, really, what are they going to do with the money? They've listed a dozen things, several things, but really, where is it going in? It's what, they just want to get the money. You know, I think that what concerns me is obviously, it doesn't look like it would be successful, but it doesn't take away the problem that we have and what exists right now. And then to say, well, let's hope that nothing really goes awry in two years until we come back around is, you know, I've always said, or I learned from somebody, hope is not a plan when it comes to these type of things. There will be. Councilman Medina is right, something will occur. Top of San Bruno Avenue, wasn't expected, but it happened. And so we're going to have this, and so it needs to be addressed. And I think it cannot just be let go in its entirety. We cannot just wait two years. We have to do something and have a plan, strategic plan, starting now, moving forward, and having some objectives, timelines and goals. And to the library, what I want to give an example is, and I don't know if it was, because I've been aged tonight, but you know I'm the most, I know by age, I'm the oldest on the city council, but please don't hold that against me. Sometimes age comes wisdom, but not by much. But at the same time, you know, back, one of the things is they have bought out for a library, they had wanted an ad hoc committee. There was like 30 people that applied. And what the council did back then is says, you know what, we're going to take everybody. Doesn't matter who applied. So we were in the basement with just a cross-section of the community. And it was impressive. And if I could go back in time and had there been recordings, I think you all would have been amazed and interested in some of the discussions and dialogues. And it came up with plans and as far as how much the cost of a library. And then, you know, eventually before that, the reason that was established was because the bond that they wanted for new library had failed. So we're trying to understand. But my point of that story is, is that it really brought everybody together in this community to really have a vision and to really build a foundation. Now unfortunately, again, that hasn't come to fruition as far as a modernized or new library, but it was a great start and an example of what I think is a good foundation to build. So with that, I think we've all said the same thing. It doesn't look viable. I believe this is what I've heard from everybody, it doesn't look viable at this time, but I think each one of us realize it's a major concern that we all share. And somehow, whatever it is, we all know this, we can spend millions of dollars underneath on San Antonio Avenue for its infrastructure. And what you'll hear from people is, the street looks great, but they're not realizing the magnitude of what the investment was and what just happened underneath that street. But again, it's the visual element and trying to educate and have people understand the intricacy of it, and it's not easy, especially in these hard times. Councilman Medina, I've not been to Denny's in a long time, but I didn't realize it had gone up that much. But anyway, that's my two cents. And anyway, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, so yes, just based on the discussion tonight, with motion to direct staff not to move further, do any further work on this bond measure at this time for the 2020 election.
Motion made. Second, Mason, Marty Medina, roll call please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I apologize.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Vice Mayor Mason said 2020, but it's 2022.
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you so much.
It's all right, we all want to be young again. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Reluctant, yes.
Councilmember Mari Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes. That motion passed five oh. And city manager, anything else?
No, counsel, thank you, but consistent to our prior comments, and I think what you have all unanimously said is, even though the city is not proceeding with a infrastructure bond in November 2022, we certainly still recognize that the city has a significant infrastructure challenge and will continue to move forward with analyzing ways for additional revenue. We will continue to support you as a council with the additional information that you have asked for the Charter City and commercial property transfer tax and bring back that information. And I just want to point out that I oftentimes hear people look at a city next door and say, but they built that thing for a million dollars, why is it costing us 1.3 million? And the answer is, well, they built it 10 years ago and inflation happens every year. And so we certainly have to continue this effort. And while it's not viable right now, it is a urgent thing because the needs are only getting greater and the cost is only getting higher. And we will continue to support you as a council to look at all options and all viable tax measures and other sources. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we want to welcome Trish Ortiz. Thank you for being here. And we made sure we got done before 8:30 just because you were here and we didn't want you to get nervous about the length of meetings. With that, thank you to staff, thank you, thank you, city manager and everyone else. Thank you, council, colleagues. All I'm going to say is, we're going to adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting of June 14th, 7 o'clock. Please be safe, enjoy and watch returns. Good night.